Two thousand twenty-four at six P M. Let's call meeting to order. Board number will call.
Angie Rowling.
Mike Gardner.
Danny Percy.
Brian Harris.
Bob Jarvis.
We all stand for the Pudge of Legions.
The Pudge of Legions, due to the line of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our eye, and with its love, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes. Warrants, correspondence, excessive permits, parks and rec requests to apply for steward holiday match. Employee insurance coverage program, uh, coverage and opt out stipend discussion and approval. Facility use agreement continued discussion, full town hall continued discussions, public comment, executive for personnel. And adjourned. They have, um. They have a couple of, uh, agenda items I'd like to add. I'd like to add discussion on town boards and officials. And I would like to add. Discussion about correspondence.
And where are you gonna add that, sir?
Where we want to cite them. What correspondence before or after correspondence, since it's cold?
Um, let's do that one before. So we'll do seven A. And discussion in town boards and officials. You can do that, uh. Let's do twelve A.
What was the other one? Town boards and officials and?
Uh, correspondence discussion.
Correspondence discussion. Okay.
So I'd like to add correspondence discussion in seven A. And town officials, uh, town boards and officials discussion as twelve A.
So moved with the change.
Yeah, so I, I, I do want to ask about the executive for personnel. I want to get more detail about what that is exactly for.
Um, that's going to be for executive assist, uh, executive assistant and administrative assistant.
And who's gonna be, who will be in the executive session?
Have we ever discussed what a personnel executive is for?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm gonna.
That's what a personnel executive is.
I'm not gonna discuss who's gonna be in it. I do want to be transparent about what it is gonna be about, and there probably will be action taken when we come out.
Okay, it, uh, I'm, well, then I'll ask Buntley then, is this about my feedback to town staff?
Um, I'm not gonna.
Not so specific about the power of the procedure, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'm not gonna, um, answer that question at this time. Um, because if it is about that, then it is an executive. Um, it is, it, it is an executive. It is an executive session, if it was to be about that. But as you know, we're not gonna talk about what an executive session is, other than it is about the executive assistant. And the administrative assistant.
Okay, I'm going to say that I do not believe an executive is appropriate by open meeting law. Maybe it is. Um, I, if it is about, if it is to discuss my feedback. I will vote no for the executive, and if you want to talk about it with me not in the room, I'm not participating in that. Yeah, and you're free to do it.
And that is your choice.
It is.
And if you don't want to vote for this agenda with the executive, as I have explained it, that is certainly your choice. And if the board as a member, uh, is a five-member for, board votes to not have this agenda with that in there. Then so be it. But if they do vote to have that in there, is that executive the way we have worded it, then we will have that executive.
You're absolutely free to go forward with an executive without me participating.
Okay, that's fine. Any more comment on the agenda? All in favor? Oh, oh, sorry.
Okay.
I thought I had a second. I thought I did already. I'm sorry. I have a motion on the floor. They'll approve the agenda with the, um. Amendments and additions. And I have a second. And with the executive explained, as much as we're going to, um, all in favor?
Angie, I.
I, I don't have to.
Oh, that's right.
No.
Okay, the agenda is approved. I'll open up public comment and give me a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds. We're gonna keep the public comment to. Three minutes. And I will also like to say at the start of this meeting. As we, as we did going here, if for any reason someone seems to get loud. For whatever reason, or obnoxious, I will ask. Twice to, um. I'll ask that person twice, and then we'll ask that person to be removed, whether it be in the room or on Zoom. And if it continues, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting, no matter where we're at. Do we have any public comment here?
I'm not seeing anyone online. I'm not sure if anyone in the room.
Anyone in the room?
Um, yes.
State your name, please.
Angie Rowling, um. I had a question emailed to me after last, uh, week's meeting. Um, I'm not gonna even, should I say the person's name or should I not?
Um, I think the name should be.
Should be right, okay. This is from Jim Kosis. Thought I'd ask you the same question as I asked Harry. Are you totally in agreement to have homeless people living at the Ladbrook Motel to be allowed to enter into a town community? Whenever they want to cook their meals. To my understanding, the access to the building would be a use of a hidden key box. And my response to him at the time was that I would gladly answer his question and public comment. And what I would like to say to Jim is I would like him to go back and to read or to re-watch the meeting on July twenty-seventh. About the community center, because it talked about historical health, social services, the goal needs for our community. It did not say anything about homeless people or a locked box. The next step was to begin to apply for grants and opportunities, specific goals in mind, collecting codes for contractors. And to have a small kitchen installed with numerous other things. Just wanted to remind him that two hundred residents took this survey, and it was from the Vermont Health Community, the Parks and Rec. And Tara also helped. Nowhere did it ever say anything about homeless entering a community center whenever they wanted to cook or to use a hidden key box. I just would like to put this out there. In Bennington County alone this year, there has been over eight hundred and sixty-three people. That are homeless, two hundred and ninety-six of them are children under the age of seventeen. Thirty-nine over the age of sixty-five and sixteen veterans. If we, as a community, could help these people. In some kind of form, I am more gladly to help in that kind of way whatsoever. And I'd like Jim to remember, when I was on the school board about ten years ago, we put a washer and dryer in. And also a shower, so children could come to school, wash their clothes, and take a shower because they didn't have water or a place to wash their clothes. Just be mindful. Of things like that, and you could help the community tremendously by taking some of your.
Thirty seconds.
Go help somebody. Go help the homeless shelter in Bennington. Go volunteer somewhere. Do something good for somebody. Thank you.
Oh, is there any more public comment here? Anybody in the room? We didn't have anybody raising their hand. Anyone in the room? No one in the room? Okay, approval of minutes, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, select board meeting. I have a second.
I'll second.
I had one of the sets. Is the eleven. I had a couple of corrections that I went through. Um. Couple of, well, it may only be questions, actually. Um, yeah, number eleven. Down towards the bottom of eleven, we need Angie motion to have terms of the Conservation Commission as follows. Three, three-year terms, and she, uh, I'm here, it's two, two-year terms. I thought it was two, one-year terms that we voted on, and I just, I, I don't. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, and the three-year terms were just be staggered the first.
Right, and that, that was signed here, wait, the way that's written up in the minutes, as far as I can tell, I just. Thought that we had discussed that it was going to be.
Yeah.
Um, two, one-year terms.
In the video, it was stated to two-year terms. I don't know if you guys have to remotion it. Or if it, I can just, if you just give me permission to change it, because in the video, it does say two, two years.
Okay. So your minutes are correct. We were wrong.
Well, uh, just to, as a comment on that, we, I think we intended it to be two, one-year terms, so that would be the same, uh. So if we said two, two years, we misspoke.
Yes.
So I think we do need the motion to say.
One years. It definitely was spoken that way before the motion.
Okay.
But I just wanted to make sure the motion was exact.
I'll entertain a motion to change that, um, the minutes eleven, as I just read those to. Two, one-year terms on the Conservation Commission.
Still move.
Second it.
Any more discussion on that part of it? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I make a motion to. Have the Conservation Committee's membership reflect the same as what we just. With the two, one year, and omit the two, two year.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, on, on, um, fifteen, budget discussion continued. The only thing I saw there was that, um, I believe it should read Casella instead of Tam. Oh, that raised the, that raised the, um, price of. Price of doing business from, just a correction, six, sixty percent increase, it's a, um. Turn reminded the board that there will be a six percent increase to the town from TAM across the board this year. I believe it should be Casella.
Yes.
So that's just a correction. I'm thinking of the month of that. It's the only thing I had on the January eleventh meeting, or minutes. Any more questions, corrections, additions?
I just had a typo. Um, it was number ten, ten lines down. It says now is no. The time of for them to rebuild, and it should probably say not. Now is not the time of. That was the only. Thing I caught.
Probably might twisted.
Oh, yeah, now is not the time to dredge the ditch.
But, yeah, thank you. I didn't have it in front of me. I remember it was number, it was in section ten, line number ten.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any else on January eleventh minutes? I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor with the corrections. Bye.
Aye.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, January eighteenth minute.
So moved.
Uh, that was our budget meeting.
Yeah.
Second it.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any corrections, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now I can get rid of you. Usually don't have this much stuff. Warrants, uh, accounts payable. Account payable, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-nine thousand, one ninety-five and six cents.
Almost.
Move a second.
Any crush, questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Accounts payable, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, forty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Payable, January nineteenth, thirteen thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and four cents.
Almost.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payable, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six-year warrants. All right, now we are on to correspondence. Make some correspondence.
You're doing the, the conversation about correspondence first. I think you put that aside.
You're right. I'm sorry. I, I get too. I'm gonna get rid of this one, because that's the one that doesn't have no time. That just has my numbers set up. Warrants, that, uh, correspondence discussion. I added that on here tonight because, um. We have, and, and our policy has been to read the correspondence that come to us via email or however they come. There's some lengthy correspondence here tonight. Um, I'd like to, my opinion is, um. How do we know for sure that the correspondence, even though they come via email, is from the. Person who said the message? I, I would like to have, if we're going to have correspondence read from here on in by the board, um. Well, I think first, I think we should not, the board shouldn't be reading correspondence like that. I think if a person wants to have correspondence. They should either zoom in because they've got that opportunity. And there's two opportunities to come on for public comment. They can do their, or even correspondence. Um, and that way, you know, we're coming to the meeting.
Well, I know I can come in usually half an hour early to check for mail and other correspondence, just to take and skim through the stuff.
What we had talked about in previous meetings, or at least maybe it was previous boards, was that if somebody wanted it read, they should say so.
And they're.
And if they said so, we would read it. And I think we've got at least two that said that they want.
Oh, I, I don't mind if I'm reading the correspondence tonight, because we have, you know, we've set precedence. And, and we have in the past read the correspondence. Um, we already read so, one through sort of public comment. Um, I just think moving forward, it's, there's, there's significant opportunity. For someone if they have correspondence, um. To be here or zoom in to, um. But it's just my opinion, that's all, you know?
No, I understand. And, and, and it's, uh, I, I think we need to be careful about being, uh, providing disincentives for. Public feedback. Um, it, I, I think we always, if we can do it. So if, according to the L C T, it's, it, it becomes a, even on public comment. As well as correspondence, if you've got a ton of it, then you kind of have to prioritize because you can't spend an hour. You can't spend an hour reading it. And the same is true with public comment. If we've got twenty people lined up, you might want to give them a minute apiece. Rather than three minutes apiece. But it does say you can even exceed it if, if the topic warrants it. So there gives us some flexibility, is basically what I'm saying.
I just, I just think that, that there's, there's ample opportunity to, if you have correspondence with the board. Uh, there's, there's an ample opportunity to, to have your own correspondence in here. Maybe, maybe a signed letter instead of an email. Um, with, in, in, the more I think about it, I mean, every, I think every single one of us in here has been hacked. Somewhere at one time or another, you know, I just hate to have a correspondence read that wasn't from.
A certain.
That, that's right. You know, I, I just, I would hate to have that happen.
I don't recall it ever happening, but I don't even want to.
In today's world, right? Could happen tonight.
Could happen.
You know, just my own, just my own thing and my own thoughts, but it's, it's a board decision. So what's the board's figure on that?
I would think unless we have an actual reason to believe that it's, that it's not legitimate, that we would go ahead and read it.
Any other input from the board?
Um, I agree that if somebody is requesting that their correspondence be read into the record. As I think we should do so, if it's appropriate, like obviously if so, if it's just a diatribe and it's profanity laced and. You know, a directed attack type deal, then no. But if it's legitimate, topic-based, respectful, I have no issue with it.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, if they've, if they've requested it, I have no issue with it.
Okay. Angie?
I have no problem with it. It's on the same request.
Okay. Delivery of correspondence here tonight. Anybody can jump in and read these. I want to, but I'll read them. First one is from Jim Bhutan. So there's a, there's a, I guess I'm just gonna read his correspondent. Well, I probably should read the whole email chain, right?
No, I'm just reading.
This should be the correspondence, because there's an email chain back and forth between, um, Bob and Jane. To the select board of the town panel, I'd like to express my opinion on the idea of creating a community center in the old town office building. I agree with Bob Jarvis in this particular instance that the board has a good reason to limit government involvement and rely on the public sector. As you are aware, the Solomon Wright Library is a public nonprofit foundation. The library board of trustees for the past year has been exploring ways in which the facility can be used more as a community center. We have an excellent remodel of building that offers a spacious meeting area, a game and crafts room, computer and printer terminals. Kitchen and bath, large outdoor lawn space, parking and a coffee house across the street. We already anticipate expanding hours of operation and have recently hired a new local director and experience. With experience and ambition to help us meet our goal of making our facility a community center. Our director, Emily Gold, is the past president of the Bennington Farmers Market Group, where she created, organized, and executed specific events. She is proficient with online website newsletters and social media, has worked with civic and economic development organizations. She has expressed to the board goals of creating a variety of activities for children and families that would occur at both weekly and monthly intervals. And I want to be clear that it's to the Solomon Wright Board, not the Board of Select. No, not this board, okay? I just want to make that clear. Would like to build on playgroup story, time to get young children and their caregivers to the library. Throughout the winter, she envisioned showing monthly movies. Or offering open play on board games Saturdays to encourage families to come in and use the library. When the weather gets warmer and we can utilize the outside space, she suggests inviting local acoustic musicians to perform and offer mini concerts. We could acquire long games that could be played outside like croquet. We will be looking for grants and other funding opportunities to bring in groups like the V I N S Nature Center. And other performers, local authors, artists, and illustrators for special events. My question to you as a select person is, with all of this already in place, why would the town want to create another facility? Bureaucracy that would have to be financially supported with staff, maintenance, and government official operation. It makes no sense. I favor selling the former office as is. The arguments against a shared well and property boundary with the existing church are not uncommon. And real estate transactions are for the attorneys to work out in the deed. Happens all the time. Please join in supporting our initiative at the Solomon Wright Public Library of making our facility a community center for all of the town of town to enjoy. Thank you, Jim Bhutan.
Can you help me out here?
I get it. Well. Now I got it. I just want to try to stay somewhat organized. That's all. Uh, this one is from Michelle Peckhoff, Planning Commission. Pomo Select Board, I am writing to you as a member of the Pomo Planning Commission and ask that my comments be read as part of correspondence or public comment. Your next regular meeting. I am also including the chair of the P C, so it can be discussed at our next meeting. I watched the most recent regular select board meeting on one eleven twenty-four. I thought that Bob's presentation was very interesting. I would have thought that the planning commission would have been involved in a conversation about uses of the town hall, especially as it exists in the village designation town green. As you are aware, the planning commission is going to be working on development analysis and plans for the town green with the B C R C. Funded by a municipal planning grant. This process will include various studies and opportunities for public input. I think there are a lot of important points made about following proper process in the meeting. In my years involved in Pomo government, I have seen many instances of proper process not being followed in the fallout afterwards. However, I will focus my comments on one particular point of discussion. At one point, the chair said something like, if we sell the building to a private business, doesn't that defeat the purpose of a town green? I want to address this question. What does town green mean? Town green does not mean town owned. Town green is not a center of municipal business and assets. A town green, village designation is a mixed-use space that incorporates any combination of public and private spaces. From the state of Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development. The Vermont Village Green Initiative is restoring appreciation for village greens and raising awareness about the important cultural, economic role they play. Vermont's village greens and common serve, serve as the physical, historic, and cultural heart of many communities. Hosting concerts, fairs, parades, seasonal festivals, and farmers markets. Integral to the Vermont brand and quality of life, village greens provide residents and visitors with a place to gather, exercise. Uh, recreate, celebrate, and engage in commerce and community. To promote reinvestment and awareness in Vermont's village greens, the state nonprofit and local partners are working to document showcase. And revitalize these shared public spaces for future generations. As you can see from this description from the A C C D, which is the organization, organization that many grants and other opportunities will come from. Town green village development, the town green is a place of community and commerce and not solely municipal business. Another point to add here was suggested at the one eleven twenty-four meeting that selling the historical town hall would be losing the building. This is not a fair statement. There are many examples of buildings on the historic register that are occupied and maintained by private people. Homes, families, and also businesses. I want to give you an example that I think is a good one. The town of North Bennington has a town green officially registered as such in the Town Greens Initiative. On this town green are multiple private business, many if not all located in historic buildings. Some examples of this, the historic Powers Market, Pangia Restaurant, a bookstore, hair salon, and various offices. There is the free library, which is not town-owned. In the center is a small park with seating and a fountain. Municipal building is actually located several blocks from the green. I suggest that the select board go back to the drawing board regarding any and all projects involving the old town hall and the town green. Firstly, it's important that you understand what a town green is. Research examples of thriving town greens that already exist in Vermont and allow the planning commission and the B C R C. Do the preliminary work of evaluating and seeking public input regarding the area. Don't skip ahead without doing your due diligence and stop making statements that aren't fully informed. This is how we create a lot of confusion and chaos in town. I have seen it happen many times before. Government-initiated projects often move very slowly, but this isn't necessarily bad. They move slowly because when done right, they are thoroughly researched and then presented to the public on multiple occasions to get their input. Thank you for your time. Who's this one's now signed, uh?
It's from the planning commission.
Okay, sorry, that's right. It was handed over like, uh, to the, it does say at the top. Sorry. According to Vermont Statute twenty-four, V S A forty-three twenty-five, the planning commission is to undertake capacity studies and make recommendations. On matters of land development, urban renewal, transportation, economic and social development, urban beautification and design improvements. Historic and scenic preservation, and undertake comprehensive planning. Including related preliminary planning and energy studies. As you know, the Pomo Planning Commission is just beginning its work with the B C R C to work on planning and possibilities for development of the Pomo Village Town Green. There's our official recommendation that you hold off on all decision-making, planning, and or development related to this area, which includes the old town hall. Church, Center Street Park, and new town hall. Until the planning commission has completed this work, we believe that once our work of seeking public input. And conducting various studies is completed, the town will be in a much. the town will be in much better position to make sound decisions regarding any change of use or development of town assets. This recommendation was supported by a handful of all present members of the planning commission at their regular meeting one twenty-three twenty-four. Do you have copies of these, right? So they can. Okay. Yeah, that's a term.
Okay, so Stuart Shop number one ninety-nine submitted a second class license application. I need approval. I have three of them.
Liquor.
Second class. I think that's um. Angie Nogar is.
Make a motion to accept the uh application, second class application for those.
Motion on the floor on second, or do I have a second? Sorry.
I'll I'll second, but with a question. Do we have to do these? You said three, right? Do we have to do them separately? Okay. Oh, I I I wasn't sure if your motion did it separately.
Oh, right. That's right. To the second class for Stewart's.
Second, yeah, that's only one.
Okay. I'll second.
So the motion is to approve the second class license per Stewart's. In the second. Any more discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Okay, Stuart Shops one ninety-nine has submitted a tobacco license application.
Make a motion to accept Stewart's tobacco license application.
Oh, second. Any questions, comments on the? And then motion was. Any questions, comments on that? All those in favor?
The final one is Stuart Shops application for tobacco substitute endorsement.
That's like.
For Stewart's second class tobacco substitute application.
Second. Any questions, comments on that? All those in favor?
Sorry, I fell asleep there.
No, sorry. Happens to the best of us. And that's it for you, right? Okay, excess weight permits. I have um Barrett Trucking signed by Joel.
Is that the only one or?
No, you want to do them all together or you want to do them separate? We're either doing them separate or? I don't care. We're doing them all together. Don't be. I have two Barrett Trucking, signed by Joel, and the other one is Newport Seating Gravel Carol Operator's Carol Con Creek, signed by Joel.
Make a motion to accept Joel's recommendation of the excess weight permits.
Second. Any questions, comments on those? Uh, they are both fleet permits. Just so unclear. Uh, any more questions, comments on those? All those in favor? Parks and Rec request to apply for Stewart's Holiday Match Program.
Okay, I have a letter from Jennifer. Dear Pummel Select Board, Parks and Rec is seeking your permission to apply for the Stuart Shop Holiday Match Program, which is accepting applications through the end of January twenty twenty seven. We have applied for this program and received funding of fifteen hundred each year for the last few years. In twenty twenty-three, these funds allowed us to install a high-quality picnic table and trash receptacle at Strobridge Park for all residents to enjoy. Previously, we've used these monies to help pay for improvements on Center Street Park. I would ask that the select board please approve Parks and Rec request to submit this application. Regards, Jennifer Boucher, Chair of Parks and Rec.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor? Employee insurance coverage and opt-out stipend discussion and approval. Everyone got that?
So you all have the figures that other towns pay because opt out. Uh, we currently pay forty dollars a week. That's a very old stipend amount.
Everyone has that. What's your pleasure on this?
That comes out to a little over two thousand a year.
Two thousand and eighty.
Bet. Per person, correct?
Per person doesn't take the, doesn't take the health insurance, the top. So it looks to me like with the, with the um information that you provided to us. It's like.
All towns do something different. Premiums, some towns do like an hour away, like an hour, you know, a couple of dollars an hour. Some do like just a percentage, like a forty-five percent. It really just depends on what you guys want to do.
So it's an annual from.
With our, our health insurance premium right now is about eleven hundred dollars, right?
And we budgeted as if everyone was taking it.
Okay, just just because one town has a forty-five percent buyout, so that's basically five hundred a month. I was just trying to make sure we had all the figures across here that were looking at.
You said our premium was eleven hundred? Is that per pay period or for the month?
So a forty-five percent buyout is four hundred ninety-five bucks based on eleven hundred dollars. And everybody you can see Pupneys, Wakefield, Bristol, Morrisville, Calais. And we have, there's five. There's five examples. And there's quite a broad range, actually, when you look at that. You know, basically five hundred a month down to um two hundred a month. It's like the least expensive.
We want to split the difference. Do something in between there.
So Bristol offers four thousand dollars annually right now, which is paid out weekly. That's seventy-six dollars and change a week. We're offering forty dollars a week is what we're paying right now. So that would be.
My, missing something. About the insurance.
Yes.
That was the forty.
Well, hold on, hold on. Any board member have a problem with Ellen or town treasurer speaking on this? As were.
No, I don't.
So the forty dollars was set a long time ago and health insurance was about four hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars a month. Now it's a double. That's why there's a question on it.
Right. No, I understand.
And like Tara said, it is, it is in the budget and when, when they take the buyout, it does come from the health insurance line. The expense of the buyout, just so that we understand.
And that, that um information came from Ellen Strohmeyer, the town treasurer. Oh, that's all right. I I got you covered. What's the board's pleasure?
Are you including your motion when it should start? Effective immediately, hopefully.
Let's um, let's do it in two separate motions.
Okay.
So we don't get confused. What's your pleasure?
What was the four thousand? You said seventy-six dollars?
Four thousand dollars a year is about seventy-six dollars and change a week.
So that's almost doubling it. Compared to what it is right now.
They're getting about two thousand eighty dollars a year right now.
Yeah. It's, it's a difference of thirty-six point nine, thirty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
It's basically double. And I believe that your Owen, I'm gonna ask it puts you on the spot. How long ago would you say that that forty dollars was based on?
That's.
Just curiosity.
I should have looked it up.
Ten years, twelve years, nine years?
At least ten.
Okay.
At least.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe even longer.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I'm just trying to pull it out of my head. I was, I know it's a very long time ago.
Okay.
I think it all started way back when they started the. It's been seventeen years, right, since then? So I want to say it's gonna be at least.
But that's been a long time.
We want to go with uh four thousand seems reasonable to me. That's the seventy-eight dollars per week that's paid out weekly. And it's a considerable increase over what we currently have, right? Almost double, but maybe not quite.
Well, I was gonna, I was thinking round it up to an even eighty. Just because if you look at all five of the examples and do the math in between them, that would be it looks like a fair margin from the higher towns versus the lowest.
Fifty thousand.
I took out the lowest town, which was less than ours.
That's, so that that makes the stipend four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars a year. If you were to go eighty dollars a week times fifty-two weeks.
Yeah. My suggestion.
I'm sorry. What did you say? I brought it up.
Forty-one sixty.
Versus a seventy-six.
I think that's fair. It's not an additional burden to the taxpayers. It's a money that's already been budgeted.
It's actually an incentive.
There's three that.
Reduce the healthcare expenses.
I just asked her how many. Insurance is three. Only three right now.
It's actually a savings on our budget.
Right.
If we. What's your pleasure?
I'm okay with eighty. So I'll make a motion. We approve the stipend incentive, however you wish to phrase it, for opting out of the health insurance to eighty dollars per pay period for a total annual cost of four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per year per employee that opts out.
I think we uh, what are our pay per periods weekly?
Yes.
Okay, now that's good.
I'll second that. The opt-out payment.
Any questions on the motion? Everyone clear on that? And our pay periods are weekly. Any more questions, comments? All those in favor of eighty dollars per week as a stipend for employees who do not take the health insurance?
Hi.
Hi.
So.
And next is when do we do it? And you want to start that?
I would say next pay period. That'd be next week.
Okay.
I make a motion that we start this effective the next pay period, which is week ending two. Two, two. Two, two, twenty-four.
Done.
And we're not doing retroactive. I just want to make sure we're covering that before the questions raise.
So this will start pay period um. Do we have, it'll end on February second, but the pay periods, wouldn't your pay period start on twenty-eighth on Sunday?
Yeah. Do we have the budget for it?
Yes.
I mean, the other reason I'm asking is because the next budget doesn't start till July first.
Yeah, Tara said the uh insurance budget is already calculated as every employee opts to take health insurance.
These two, two, right?
The paper ending.
Yeah, okay.
But it actually starts on the twenty-seventh on Sunday. Just wanted to make sure. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is to you start this next, next pay period, which ends on February second, eighty dollars per week per employee that does not take the health insurance. All those in favor?
Um, I believe that the board was still kind of waiting to make the motion on the insurance coverage for employees. The additional benefit that um you've decided to budget for, you did not vote on yet. Need to vote on that in an open session and then I can change it in the personnel policy and bring it back.
That's the one where we just start picking up the difference this year when it went up on January first.
Uh, no, you did vote to do that, but you did not vote to cover one hundred percent of employees premiums.
Okay, I thought we did that.
Employee and family.
To start on July first.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll interpret the motion to um for the town to cover a hundred percent of town employee insurance starting July first, twenty twenty-four, which is an increase from sixty-six percent, is that right, Ellen?
Yes, it is.
So more.
Seconded.
Which gives all our town employees, it actually gives them a raise on their weekly pay versus giving them their insurance and a separate pay raise. Just wanted to be clear. Any more questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. To the next. We're done with insurance, right? That was the only thing we had for that.
Yep.
Facility use agreement continued. So we have facility use agreement, recurring events, facility use agreement, one-time use and facility use policy. So we beat this around for months and months and months and it's time to move this one along.
Well, have, have we given any feedback? Have we decided on what the fee is? Uh, there was both a fee and I believe there was still an open question on whether or not there was going to be a security deposit. So there are some open questions that we need to hash through.
Right, and those are, those are highlighted in red on everything that we have in front of us. How do you want to handle it? Do you want to go to the, you want to start the recurring event? There's three things on facility use. Recurring events, one-time use and facility use policy. Where do you want to start? Let's start with facility use policy. So everyone has that in front of them?
Yep.
Hopefully, everybody's read it.
So I've compared this to the V L C T model policy and it pretty much is the model policy.
Definitely. Just kind of copied and pasted and then you know, was looking for your, your guys' feedback on it.
So in the, in this one here, the security deposit is listed as something that needs to be taken care of. And the, at the very beginning of it is facilities to which this policy applies, which has available hours, user fee, maximum occupancy. Which facility down in there?
Yep.
I think at this point, we're, we're sitting in the, the only facility that's currently available for that. If another facility becomes available, we can always come back and revisit and add it to the list and it may have different rules than the other.
Well, with the, or no, the town green is our other.
Well, we're talking about a building, right?
No, you're right. I think that we can leave that language there so in the future we do have other buildings or facilities.
Well, right, but in this section, I think we're supposed to itemize the facilities that this applies to.
Okay.
Right, and, and because they, they may not have the same hours, user fees or, and they certainly won't have the same occupancy. So what I'm suggesting is right now it is the schoolhouse portion of the town hall. And then we may add others to it, but there. And then we may add others to it, but there's other decisions to make on those that I don't think we're prepared to make tonight. That, that's all I'm suggesting. It, it, you know, if we're talking about the facility, let's, let's go ahead and put that in. The schoolhouse, the town hall schoolhouse.
Um, so put input this, well, under facility, put the town hall schoolhouse. Schoolhouse section of the town hall, maximum occupancy forty-five.
And now we just have to decide on available hours and user fee. If everybody's in agreement.
Okay, when we're done, let's do that one. What are we looking at for available hours? There's not a lot of nights that during the week that are available that. There's, there's people, do any of our boards or commissions use it on a Monday?
I think occasionally you might end up with like a special meeting. Like I know, like schedule wise, we've met as Parks and Rec on a Monday before. It's rare usually. If we can't meet on Tuesday, but.
Order trustees. Civil authority or other, I mean.
Or, yeah.
Uh, they use it on Monday nights.
Do we wanna start with weekends and see if we have demand for that? And then maybe come back and change it. Change it if we, if we see that there is demand and days that we know we aren't gonna use it.
I, that's where I was going with it. I think that, I think that at this point in time, because this building, this particular space. This municipally owned space that we're all sitting in right now could potentially be used. Any given night for one of our regular boards or commissions. Monday through Friday. Cause we've all sat here on different nights. Friday night, we, we've all, you know, we've been in here on a Friday night for something or whatever. And I hate to be able to not have a. I would hate to not be able to ha- be able to schedule something along of a. Vicious dog bite thing because somebody was in here having a birthday party.
Special meat, correct?
I mean, we had, we do have some other space, but this is our space. Just my thought.
Something to take into consideration with this policy is who and how. Who is going to be here on a weekend? How are they getting into the building?
Somebody's not allowing entry access.
There's definitely something you have to take into consideration.
And what would be normal daytime hours?
I, I don't know. It depends on what, what it is, I guess.
The building is usually open from eight to three thirty or eight to four.
Usually eight to four at least, yeah.
During the week.
During the week.
Well, do we wanna take our building that's. On a business day, town business.
Exactly.
You know, do we wanna take that and, and have it unavailable for? Um, I know I've sat in here on town business, I'm doing meetings.
Right.
You know, in the, in the middle of the day because. You know, it's, it's a private space where, you know, you're not trying to be private, you're just trying to be uninterrupted.
Right. So Ellen has a question.
No, I just have.
Or suggestion?
May I? I got a question.
Does the board, does the board have a problem with questions or comments from the audience?
No, I do not.
I know.
Recognize.
Ellen?
Ellen Sturmeyer, uh, treasurer. I just, uh, also wanna say it's during the day, during working hours. This place echoes everywhere, even when their doors closed, we can still hear each other. There is no sound, it's not soundproof. Okay, so if there was a birthday party or something, I got here and we're all trying to work there. The restrooms are right there. They have to come out to be able to use the restroom. You have to allow them to be able to go out there. Can't rent them or whatever you're doing. Um, this space is not allowed to use the bathroom, which means during business hours. If it's a two-year-old birthday party, we may have fifteen young children running through the town hall during her. Working hours, which is. Fine if somebody is here to control that. I'm just saying it echoes. So just take that into consideration in your hours of scheduling. For the people that are all there trying to do their job.
Thank you.
Carl?
Just a quick question. Is there?
Carl Sturmeyer.
Excuse me, Carl Sturmeyer, is there that insurance requirement?
That's down further, yes.
Okay, I just didn't.
Joel?
Joel, Joel Verington.
I suggest actually maybe do it downstairs. Big space down there.
Well, the historical society has one part and then the bottom part over there is storage.
But, well, yeah, it can be cleaned up. There's a lot of rain down there. And it's painted. I mean, it's, it's not bad down there.
And they had to, they had to put the ceilings in and finish it off to get the certificate of occupancy. And there is a bathroom. And there's a bathroom.
Should you really help? Uh, you talk about weekends and stuff. People, you know, in here with vital records in the offices and.
Valid point. And they, you can't confine them to this space because there's not a restroom in there. They have to, right, they have to be in the main part of the building.
Somebody would have to, while somebody's using the facility.
Right.
Joel's idea is not horrible. I kinda like that idea now that, now that he says it.
Um, the occupancy is probably higher than everybody does in here too.
Can we find, I hate to say, can we, can we like table this and find out? I hate to do that to you. Bring it back next time.
Can we address the other things in it?
Yeah.
Can we look at the other stuff?
Don't have to table.
We don't have to table it. We can make, we can make that motion right now. The, the, the space, the facility. Space that is available.
Is downstairs.
Is the downstairs space adjacent to the historical society space.
And then we will need to install.
We have our certificate of.
They can lock the door.
No, we will need to install um, a, a like a gated fence wall or some kind of wall where our records are downstairs. Just, just something to keep in mind, cause there is storage downstairs too. Yep, yeah. And it would be very easy. It's one of them things you kinda, you know, those accordion gates.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't real for having people use this space up here. It's, it's a cost to the town. Because, because you're, we're gonna have to hire somebody to be here. And you're still gonna have to hire somebody at least to open and close the basement. So you're gonna have to give somebody like a three or four hour minimum, whatever we do. Uh, you know, on an on-call basis, right? I, I think that would be the consistent way to do it. If we have um, like our wastewater guy, like Jeff's on call. You know, if, if we're paying him four hours, then somebody who opens and closes downstairs. Should probably be paid. In a similar fashion.
Plus up here, right, to, to lease out the space, you're gonna have to move all of us out.
Yeah, we'd have to move.
Somebody would have to come, have, move it out.
I wasn't a big component for.
There's a, a comment from Julie also. She wanted to say that it would make her feel better because her space is wide open.
Everything over there, it works off a suddenly by the door.
I'll interpret a motion to. Make the downstairs space of the town hall adjacent to the historical society space. Available. Or.
Maybe a, a comment on that. Should we wait on the motion until we've decided the other thing so we can put them in here? Because basically what you're, what we're deciding is what we're gonna put in the facility. It won't be the schoolhouse. It'll be the, the downstairs portion of the house, but we still have to of the, of the town hall. But I think there's still other open questions here. If we answer all those open questions, then we can do a motion and approve it with the, with all changes. Cause I think we still have more to talk about, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say to give us a starting point about, cause we didn't have one. We, we had zero starting point.
So, and so, you know, that's good. I think, I think we're, we're gonna move forward with saying the downstairs portion. And I like that a lot better because I'm looking at the mailboxes over there and thinking about kids from through. Um, uh, but I think there's a couple more, a couple more changes and a couple more decisions that we need to make. And then we can approve the policy all at once.
I was gonna try to do it, yeah. Should we?
Six of one, half dozen of the other.
Well, I'm thinking that we should approve each one to, so there's no confusion. And then it's all gonna be in one policy anyway, right? It's all gonna be written into one policy. I just don't wanna have a motion that says we're gonna rent out the space or lease or whatever we're gonna call it. Allow use of the space down there and it's gonna be available. You, you know, from eight to five and, and it's gonna cost fifty bucks and you're ma- you know, the maximum, maximum occupancy, we can't answer that to me anyway.
Correct.
But the, I was gonna try to do it one at a time. The fee, the available hours and the space. Is what I was gonna try to do so that it wasn't a big, long, confusing motion.
Okay, that, um, I'm, I'm fine with that too. I just thought, I thought we would just make one and, 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 and hit it for the, for the portion. And I think we're all in agreement that it's the downstairs. Um, now how, and, and of course, we have to come up with the verbiage on saying the downstairs portion. Cause we don't want it confused with the panel of historical society.
Well, that's why I think if we say adjacent to the historical society space. Right? Cause next door sounds pretty. Backwards. What's your pleasure?
As far as the available hours? For any of it?
Gotta keep going, right?
I'd say available hours, uh, Saturday, Sunday, say eight to four, or we can break it up into like. Two, four hour blocks.
Minimum of four hours.
Cause I was thinking a party or like a shower or whatever is.
Well, like most, like a kid's birthday party, like.
Yeah, they're no longer.
Three hours, like it's pretty much you're done.
Right. I mean, with the good part of that, with the portion of it being downstairs is they can use the park.
Yeah, cause I mean, I'm also looking at it like whoever's gonna have to be available for it, we're gonna have to pay them. And I'm kinda thinking the user fee needs to at least cost what it's gonna cost the taxpayers to pay somebody to come here. Open it up, kinda hang around and then lock it up.
I think twenty-five dollars an hour is fair, but that's not.
Well, that's why I'm thinking like we should probably break it up into like certain blocks of time. Cause I don't wanna make it to where like, oh, I gotta pay for eight hours, but we're only gonna be there two.
Oh, right, exactly. And I don't wanna make it so expensive that people don't wanna use it either.
Yeah, so uh, just to uh. Thinking this through, now that it's not the town hall, then now that it's not this room in the upstairs. That means the open hours can be the same as the open hours of the town hall. Just like the library, when they, when you rent out it, it, all you do is sign up for it. You don't need to pay anything, but you can just sign up to use a room at the library. And I've done that in the past. Uh, but that means that we can start with those available hours just being, uh, just being. Normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to whatever, and then uh. Um, trying to think of a way to, to throw in weekends, uh. Uh, uh, weekends as a special arrangement or as, weekends are available as a special arrangement. Um, that sort of thing, uh, because we're gonna have to talk. Cause then we're gonna have to have somebody come in, open up the space, lock it up when they're done, uh, that sort of thing.
So it'd be weekends per request, but hours of hours between eight and four.
Yeah, so we could do eight and four, uh, Monday through Friday and then weekends by request and, and the. Uh, I think that's probably something along those lines, but.
You're still gonna have to cover the staffing during the week. Like somebody's gonna have to kinda be available down there.
Right, and I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be, um. Our administrative assistant or executive assistant. I don't want it to be. Um, I guess we could have. Um. Billy could be here if it was in the morning. But, because he's here anyway. But. You know, he's also, if they're gonna close up at. Two-thirty or whatever, he's working for the road too.
I say we start with weekend hours and we see what kind of demand we have. And if we get enough requests to where people wanna try to use it during the week, we can try to expand it.
Hold on. Joel, do you have a problem? Let him break away the honor to lock the door?
In the afternoon to close up, it's not a big thing. I don't think he's gonna wanna organize some weekends. Or yes, maybe, maybe. Something we care.
I'll, I'll, I'll approach him about that. It's fine, anybody. Well, I, I mean, the thing to do about that, the thing to do about that is put it out to our, to the town employees that we already have. If anybody's interested in doing that on weekends. Somebody may be interested in that for a four hour. Pay, pay period.
And if you have the responsible partner, like the firehouse, right?
Yeah, we let, so with the firehouse, we, we let them in.
Right.
And they know what we use, they use it. We don't have to stay there. They have to clean up, we go back and check. And then they usually give us a donation. We don't charge, but everybody always gives them some kind of a donation for the use of it.
And your policy is they lock the door when they leave.
And they lock the door when they leave, but that, yeah, cause we have.
We have an alarm.
We have an alarm system, so we.
I know.
So somebody would have to do that, but yes, they lock the door on the way out. And then one of the, uh, one of us would go back and check.
And we.
House to make sure everything was off.
They locked the cement, now we can't isolate just the downstairs door, can we? With this. Oh.
We could.
Okay, that's, I mean, cause that's the only other thing that I don't want is the whole building to be open. Even though the building is technically secured by key.
Right. Yeah, we would have to have the alarm company separate it. It's possible.
I'm, I'm thinking you put your code in and then put a separate code in for that.
The door will open up here if the alarm's off. As long as you unlock the door, if you're doing the code downstairs.
That's what he's saying. That's what he's saying. He doesn't want it.
Case somebody.
Just in case, I get.
Jenny, do you have something?
I, I was just curious, I mean, you're talking.
Jenny, Jenny, do I? I got it, I got it.
Have you been having a high demand for birthday parties for teenagers? I mean, I thought that we're talking about like meeting space.
Right.
But not like event party space, but what, if someone goes, hey, I want to have my birthday party at the town. But I mean, you can also restrict what the space, like, you know, it's for meetings, it's for this, it's for that.
I don't know if you're requiring insurance, certificate of insurance. That's not really applicable to birthday parties.
Yeah, I think probably like the party thing, reduce of.
Yeah, I think.
Showers and like.
You know, I would, I would think that, I would think that, that it would be. That's a good point, but it was, it was just a hypothetical, hypothetical, I'm sure. I think it would be specifically for meetings for specific groups, you know. Alcoholics Anonymous, just pulling it out of the somewhere, right? That would give them a space potentially every. Tuesday morning from nine to twelve to do, I don't know how long it goes.
Right, now you can just say it's dark, it is the hours.
Right, right.
I kind of like the, the Monday through Friday weekends by request. I think that's the most workable.
And I think we should go nine to.
Nine to three.
Nine to three. I think to start with and see where we go from there.
And then when people start using it, we, we may get feedback and we can always come back in and change hours and change, change what we need to.
Okay, so we, we have, we have a time. We have a space. Now we need a fee.
Um, Angie, you suggested twenty-five an hour. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, if it's gonna be like. A substance abuse or something like that, that is free to our residents and they're helping them. I feel kinda bad about. Charging them a fee.
Um, let's see, if we look down here, optional, I, I kinda like that. If user fees may be waived by the select board, insert relevant language here, such as. By written request, the select board may waive the user fee for events that are not-for-profit and that serve a legitimate public and community good.
Right, and in that case, you might have like a cleaning fee. Maybe not an hourly. Maybe not an hourly rate, but a set rate for.
Um, could, could we, could that be covered with the deposit and then, and then you, it's a, if they leave it a mess, then we have to keep some of the deposit to clean it up, if they clean it up, to get the deposit back.
Yeah, that's a valid point.
There's someone on, um, Zoom that would also like to make a comment since we, I don't know if that's acceptable or not.
You know.
But yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine, we open it up to, to public time of here, you know, within the audience. And I think, you know, yeah, that's fine, you know. Please, please state your name when you come in, that's all.
Great, sure, thanks so much, um, Jeanie Alexander, um, town resident, just a, a quick point of clarification, if I could. I'm just sort of thinking about the timeline that we're talking about, if the like, let's say we didn't have an A group or someone else who wanted to meet, um, like that nine to three slot. I, I just wanna say that I think a lot of people who live here are working like later than three o'clock, you know, I think that there are a lot of people who don't get off work until, you know, maybe five or six or whatever, and so I just wanna, uh, some clarification, so are you suggesting then that evening, like that meeting would be between nine and three? And so evening meetings during the week would be not available? I just, I'm, I'm seriously just like seeking some understanding, because as I recall, the last select board meeting, one of the things we talked about was that the space that like you're all sitting in, which is really a beautiful space, has been created, was also intended to be community space. Um, you know, and I'm just like, I'm wondering about people who are working all day long and maybe their, their meetings, and again, not birthday parties would happen later in the day, thanks.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, she does have a valid point, and I thought about that, how, how could we word it? Why couldn't we, why couldn't we set this up that the available hours were to be approved by the select board?
Upon request?
Upon request.
Well, that, and that's the, what we were talking about with weekends, we could do the same thing with after hours.
Right.
Those are on a case-by-case basis and after.
So we could, we could do an, it's, it's available nine to three.
Instead of saying.
Through Friday, or um.
After hours.
Or by, uh, request.
Yeah, we, we, uh, something to the effect of we'll entertain special requests, uh, for after hours and weekends.
Mm-hmm.
What, what available?
Because she does have a valid point.
Yeah, it is, but we were struggling with bringing people in and stuff and to clean up, I mean, there's the, the, the point number.
The positive is that, I kinda like that deposit. And, and if we have a substance abuse group downstairs and they meet from five to seven every Wednesday night, we know that, but, but they could come to us and request that. Come to the select board and request that, and then we have a deposit. And if, you know, and if they're here next Tuesday and they leave it a mess, and they come in Wednesday morning or Tuesday night and it's a mess, then the next Tuesday, they're looking for somewhere else. Right, and I'm just being right, I mean, that's, that's an easy thing to, to handle. You know, I mean, I don't see him having a bunch of chips and pop them in, but.
So, so I think we need to put in the available hours, and I think that, uh, ju- just because of, of who's available, that's going to be what we were talking about. And then below this grid where we talk about the facility, maybe there's, uh, you know, the, uh, we need a footnote, right, a little asterisk, and the asterisk says, uh, can be available after hours or weekends, uh, with special request, please contact, blah, blah, blah.
Right, and who are we gonna put as the contact person?
Well, they, they would be contacting during regular hours, so it'd be town staff, it'd be the executive assistant or the administrator.
So it would, it would be a request to come to the select board.
Right.
So it would be brought up at the next regular board meeting.
That's cool.
Yeah, so requests need to be made minimum two weeks ahead of time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay, now you're wording your motion.
But did you, did you decide on security deposit or?
No, we didn't decide the amount.
We haven't ever hit that yet.
Man, I think, I think you have to break it down, I don't think we can make one motion to cover everything in here.
Uh, it'd be too wordy.
Right, the motion would be two days long. I think we, we, the facility is the downstairs pa- space of the town hall adjacent to the historical society.
Yep.
Well, actually, the motion wouldn't be that long. If we decide to put it all in here, the motion is gonna be to approve, just like we do minutes or anything else, is to approve this policy. We don't, we don't, any other policy that we put into place, we approve it.
So tonight, we shouldn't be approving this policy, tonight, we should fill in the blanks.
And then come back with a.
Then go back with the policy, next regular meeting in February.
And then we've got a, you know, we've got a little time to, to mull through it, cause as you can hear, we're, we're getting some, uh, we're getting feedback that is changing our minds, right, so, so we need to be open to that.
Facility, everybody comfortable with that, with that wording on the facility? The, the downstairs, um, the lower, the lower level of the town office adjacent to the historical society.
I feel like eventually we're gonna name it at this rate.
I'll put, put a name out of the room.
I, I, I'd call it the, the lower level adjacent to the historical society. I don't wanna call it basement, Brian, cause you know what, this, it gives it a bad.
Lower meeting room.
It gives you.
Yeah, lower meeting room.
Right, just my personal opinion, I don't care. I just wanna figure it out, lower level space adjacent to the historical society space. Everybody good with that?
But downstairs portion of the town hall adjacent to town historical society?
That's fine. Okay. Available hours, Monday through Friday, nine to three, or by special request, at least two weeks in advance. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep, yep.
User fee.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the twenty-five dollars per hour with the, uh, with that optional language at the bottom. Uh, was it by written request, the select board may waive the user fee for events that are not-for-profit and that serve a legitimate public and community good. That, that's pretty good language, it's straight from the V L C T and we could put it, we just put it right there.
Well, everybody good with that?
Yep, yep.
Do we have a minimum user fee? Probably said, right?
A minimum user fee, I think they.
Twenty-five dollars an hour, is it a minimum of two hours? Or, or is it a minimum of three hours, because if it's, if we don't waive the.
The fee, it's gotta be something, maybe a minimum.
Have to cover whatever we're paying somebody to come in here at nine o'clock, make sure the building's locked up, well.
Yeah, I think we arrive at twenty-five, is that? That's about what we pay somebody on an hourly rate, and therefore, it's probably a minimum of one hour, that's a good question.
Well, but are we gonna, if somebody's gonna use this building from six to nine
at night?
At night, they came and did all they're supposed to do, right? And they're gonna use it from six to nine at night. Are we just gonna pay that person, employee? Two hours, I, I don't, I don't think you're gonna get anybody that's gonna wanna do it for fifty bucks.
Right, plus it's gonna be.
Cause they gotta be here six, when, when our staff.
Are we saying that somebody has to be here the entire time?
We have to lock it up.
Somebody's gonna have to come and then, what, they leave for an hour, then they gotta come all the way back over again.
Right, and.
Well, even, you know, if they live across the street, it does, you know, doesn't matter, right? They still have to be available to unlock the building at six o'clock at night. Be hypothetical, right? Just have to be here at nine fifteen, you know, or whatever. If that, if those were the hours to come back and lock it, and are we gonna give somebody twenty-five bucks for that? Yep, that's gonna be a select board member doing it then, okay, and nobody's gonna do it.
Right.
Nine.
Well, wait a minute, the user fee is nine to three, right?
Yeah, but.
The user fee is nine to three, and then when we talk about after hours and weekends are available by special request, please contact so-and-so for availability and cost.
Correct.
So that's where we will come as a select board and decide what that's gonna cost, based on, based on the knowledge of when they're gonna show up, when they're gonna leave, and we can check availability of resources.
But we should have a set rate, yes, if we're.
Uh, personally?
That's how most places, they've got a deposit, security deposit, and then a set rate for usage.
During regular, and, and that's, and that would be true here during regular hours, right?
Yeah, but for any time.
Personally, I'd go with a hundred dollar minimum.
Yeah.
Because, because if you're gonna waive the fee, you're gonna waive the hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Right, if you're waiving the fee for whoever's here, but if you're, if you're paying somebody to come in here uh, e- every Tuesday night, well, it's gonna co- it's gonna cost us a hundred bucks. Because we're gonna have to pay somebody, whoever it is, Joel will pop in, he's, he's good at that. Uh, you know, just staff up.
If it's a match, hail to Joel, I was gonna say it.
But I, you know, I think, I think, I think you.
Six dollars.
But I think if you, so if you had a seven, five dollar minimum, then you're not losing money by paying an employee to come up here to lock up or let them in.
Right.
Right, you're not making any money either, you're covering your costs to pay somebody to do it.
Yeah, cause even if we did a scheduled overtime deal for an hour online hour, you're still talking two hours, but that's that time and a half rate, so either way.
Right, we definitely wanna get our costs, but does that belong in the user fee, or does it belong in the special cost? Because there's a, definitely a different, a different cost to us, the town, to do it during business hours versus doing it after hours.
Well, I think it's, you're getting a user fee, because you're still gotta clean the facility after.
Hold on a minute, let me look at, let me look at the verbiage.
Well, that's the.
That's covered by the deposit.
That's the deposit, though, you can, you can keep their deposit if they left it a mess.
Yeah, hold on, let me read this real quick.
I think.
Well, yeah, if there's any damage.
If we have anything. Okay, so, so if we have, and this is the one-time use policy.
Uh huh.
There is a, there's a user fee and security deposit in the one-time in the one-time user, and we're gonna assume without, no, I'm not gonna assume. So, so we can cover that in the one-time user, okay? I'm not gonna assume, I'm gonna go to the reoccurring events, because I'm going to believe that there's gonna be something very similar, there is. Users will pay the, users will pay the municipality a user fee of X number of dollars per meeting payable, whatever, when or how often. One or reoccurring, so if someone were to use it for a substance abuse meeting, that's where you would, it would be a reoccurring event, and that's where you would come up with the that's where you would come up with the user fee for that event, and you certainly, the board certainly could have that as a to-be-determined fee. We don't even have to set that.
Right.
You could set it when someone gives you that special request to whatever it is, so that, so that we were gonna do it, if they were only using it for two hours, we can cover our costs on a three-hour pay scale or whatever. You certainly could have that as a to-be-determined.
Uh huh.
In my opinion.
Just to count on. Uh, Carl Stowey, uh, Town of Vennington charges for nonprofits fifty dollars an hour and for volunteer groups, twenty-five dollars. And they don't differentiate between the time.
Correct.
So, I mean, the way I would look at it is, is it's a set cost, doesn't matter whether it's.
Right.
Two in the afternoon or seven or six at night, so.
I thi- I think, I think we have that, I think we write it in there, I think twenty-five bucks an hour on that agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Is good, user fee is twenty-five dollars an hour, the maximum occupancy, we don't, we do not have that information, so we'll have to find that out before.
Do we have a certificate of occupancy for downstairs? So we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to get that in order to.
What's that?
I just have to call them and have them come.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to call them, fire marshal office, and have them come, that's why we don't have that information. So we're good, we have the facility, we have the available hours, and we have the user fee.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
So now you can finish that policy.
No, um, we don't have the security deposit, and I would like to make one recommendation in the opening paragraph.
That's a recommendation.
Oh, the recommendation is just to, to add a sentence right after the, uh, in allowing the use of these facilities, municipality will not discriminate against users of the facility based on uh, the user's particular viewpoints, um, and that's straight out of the L C T. Um, but I, just thinking about it myself, I think the, uh, um, this, this language, I think, would help. The municipality will make no determination regarding use of space based on mission, views, or goals of any entity requesting use, so long as the intent, intent of use does not involve political organizing or campaigning or for-profit business activity. So I don't think we put in here that you can't come here and run a, run a, a store out, out of, uh, uh, out of the, now, I, I, when I first, when I first was thinking about this, I wanted to put fundraising in there too, but that might actually be a legitimate. You know, somebody falls on hard times, somebody wants to run a, sell pies or something downstairs to, to raise money, that, that probably should be allowed.
I, I thought.
So again, that language was, the municipality will make no determination regarding use of the space based on mission, views, or goals of any entity requesting use, so long as the intent of use does not involve political organizing or campaigning or for-profit business activity. Are we comfortable with that? I think, I think we do need to say things like that. We don't want somebody running their political campaigns out of it.
Well, that's, that's common language from municipalities. I believe that's a statute. Thing, also.
Well, I, uh, when you say common language, and, um, it's not in this policy.
Not, not in this policy, but it's, or commonly known, I guess, is it?
Well, and, uh, uh, does anybody have an objection to putting it in?
No, I was just looking, I thought there was something.
I don't mind, I don't mind the for-profit.
Further, yeah, but the for-pro, I thought there was something about running a business already in here, I was.
Well, I, I mean, I, it just, I think we need to steer away from either the appearance of propping up or opposing a political party.
Mm-hmm.
Just get out of that altogether by saying not political activity.
I think Jamie, I think Jamie's right, I think, isn't that, isn't that already
Yes.
in a state statute that on municipally-owned properties, you can't have political campaigning?
That's true.
Right.
I just don't wanna be redundant fifty times.
The only time that it's allowed, and it's only allowed with so many, within so many feet, if the municipality or property is owned by the municipality for, uh, voting purposes, then it has so many feet from the entrance.
Actually.
Should we actually, if it, I'm sorry, i- if it, if, if that's correct, then should we put the language in here saying that this facility will adhere to, yes, a whatever statute?
I don't know.
If that statute, i- if there is a statute that says that.
I could find it.
And they're probably.
And I think, I, I think that's fine, I think that's fine.
I guess.
If there's a statute that says that, I think that's exactly what we do, then if there's not, then we can revisit that, but it ain't to be redundant fifty times over.
Right, and that's.
I do agree with the, with the for-profit statement, but I definitely agree with that.
And, and that might be a statute also, for all I know.
Yeah, it might be.
But it, it's pretty common to reference statutes and policies.
Right.
Exactly. The, we can look that up.
Yeah.
Is that the only other thing? We have the security deposit.
The security deposit.
Yeah, we have the security deposit, and I believe that's it.
Security deposit, we were gonna, right?
If they don't damage.
So I would say fifty dollars security deposit, and then the twenty-five dollars an hour. I assume we agree on twenty-five dollars. What's up ladies, friends?
Yeah, and I think this needs to be taken out of here on the security deposit portion of it. An additional security deposit of X number of dollars will be required for events where alcohol will be turned, so I don't think, I, I don't think we should have alcohol at a, at an event in the, inside the town office or on town.
Where does it say that?
Under security deposit.
Really?
If you read it down to, yeah. Security deposit of whatever will be required use, for the use of the facility when any applicable condition, such as when a certain number of guests are expected, et cetera. An additional security deposit of dollar an hour will be required for events where alcohol. An additional security deposit of dollar amount will be required for events where alcohol will be furnished, I think, I, I, we, we don't allow alcohol.
No, we don't, and then the next, in the next paragraph, it says that, but.
Yeah, exactly.
This is the model.
Right, I just think we strike that right out of there, you know, there will be no alcohol, and that's right there, right?
So, so what that would indicate is that there is no statutory requirement that alcohol is not allowed. So, it, it would, it would make it, uh. We probably want to incorporate that into the other language, if this, if, you know, uh. What I'm trying to get at here, you know, the municipality would make no determination, blah, 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 we can actually throw in the alcohol if we need that, that. If there's no statute for it, if not, well, make this easier, let's just do the language right there under the security deposit.
And, and it says right there, it says alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, whatever, are forbidden on municipal property, so it's already in that. In this policy, we just have to strike that portion out of the security deposit, because that gives them. Potentially give someone the.
Well, we have to add al-, it says alcohol, tobacco, and drugs.
Right, but in that security deposit, it said an additional amount, so it could give them the presumption that, that they could have alcohol.
Right, so we take that out.
We take it right out of there, and then, and then recover down. We're gonna do a fifty dollars. So, the board's pleasure is.
I'm okay with fifty dollars, but we can, and again, we can always revisit if we find out our costs are exceeding, uh. The, exceeding the benefits.
Everybody's comfortable with fifty dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're good on the facility use policy, we have everything, Tara, that you need to finish that up.
Yes, and I will bring it back to the next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting. Do you wanna do the reoccurring in the one-time? I mean, it's basically.
Fill in the information from the policy on those.
You can, right, so they're, they're basically done, let me, let me just.
And they'll naturally have statements of use, right, they're telling us what they're using the facility for.
Number of adults, number of, um, seventeen years or under, there'll probably be at least number of adults over eighteen years of age for every. Number of minors for the duration of the event, and we have to specify what we're getting required, and we could certainly fill that in. Users will pay the municipality user fee, you know, to be determined for the meeting, so I'd like to write that in there. Right, because we're gonna approve or not on these right here. Uh, what about the cleaning, what they're responsible for?
That's already in there.
That's in there. I was gonna say, my version has, it's red, in red, and specify any cleaning activities that you want done, such as sweeping floors, disposing of all trash. That would be in the, that would be in the reoccurring event agreement, right? I'm looking at the one-time use one. Last time. Oh, I'm, I'm, I went to the top one, Brian, I'm sorry, I went to the reoccurring event one. Alright, I'm in the one-time. And right there, right there in the heading on this one, for meetings and other re- reoccurring events. At which no alcohol will be served, sold, or consumed. And in that, we probably should put. Drugs. Alcohol and drugs at the ver- in the heading, where it says facility use agreement for meetings and other reoccurring events, at which no alcohol. Tobacco. Right? Or illegal drugs.
Looking at it, I do not see what you're talking about. Reoccurring one.
Right at the very top.
Oh, for me, yeah. It's been a long day, we've been here since.
But it's not working too well. I'm trying.
Yep.
So, I think that, I think tobacco and, and illegal drugs would be added right at the very top, right, if we're gonna have the alcohol. So, basically, we, or in this, for the space that's available for them, reading this in red, about the, the. Cleaning and, there's, there's no dishes to be washed, because there aren't any down there. There's no wiping in the kitchen counters, basically, it's gonna be a trash, in the trash receptacles. There's no furniture down there, and we're not gonna provide furniture for people to have an event, they're gonna have to provide their own.
I don't know about all that.
Well, it's not ours.
Let me think about it, let me do some brainstorming with Bill on the use of the downstairs, downstairs space. At least give him a table, some chairs.
So, do you wanna, you wanna bring that back, then, and you at least have somewhere, so you wanna bring the reoccurring in the, in the one-time use back?
Yeah, so that I can discuss it, the specifics with him, and figure out what that's gonna.
I'm fine with that, cause that blows those two right away, and we don't have to deal with them tonight. I'm perfect with it.
It's getting cold in here.
Okay, so we're done with the facility use, so you're gonna continue the discussion? You're comfortable? Brings up town officials. Boards, town boards and officials discussion. I think we, um. After watching the meeting. Recently. I think we need to send our. Commission and board chairs. A letter to be read at their meetings. On. Questions. And comments. To. Or about. Our. Employ, town employees. I wanna learn this the right way. I, I think they need to be, I think the board chairs and, and board members and commissions need to be careful. On what kind, what kinds and types of questions that they ask. Our town employees who are also present at the meeting. Um, whether they're running the meeting or just present as a town employee. And I think we need to send a letter. To them, um. I, I think some questions that were asked of Hannah. That were inappropriate at the time to, to, in, in that particular meeting. I think there was a couple of questions that were inappropriate.
Uh, which meeting are you referring to?
Planning commission. I think that, um. There was, there was a question that, that I believe was inappropriately asked, of whether or not there was a signed lease agreement. Or, or grant agreement, I don't think that's her position to answer that question, from the planning commission.
Um, if. When I saw it, I was impressed with the answer, I believe the answer was, you'll have to ask select board.
The answer was not, not that I'm aware of, I think was the answer.
I was asked once, they gave both those answers.
Oh, okay, I only heard the one, so, I'm sorry about it, I only heard the one, I believe the one, the one that I heard was not that I'm aware of, and I, you're absolutely correct.
I was actually impressed with the answer, because it's, if, if, if you don't feel it's appropriate to answer, then you refer it to the select board. I don't think there was anything inappropriate about the question.
I do, uh, she's, she's not here. In that particular instance, she's not here as the administrative assistant. She's here as the secretary. Or mi- assistant, administrative assistant, not, not the administrative assistant, she's here. For the planning commission, for their minutes, and to run their meeting, or the, or the DRB, or the. Racks and parks, or whatever she's doing. And I also think there was an inappropriate comment. About, um. The administrative assistant. Um, saying what can and can't be put on an agenda. I think that was inappropriate at the time. When, when the comment was made. That's why I added these, and if the board doesn't feel that those were inappropriate, then that's fine with me too. But I just think we need to send a letter to all of our boards and commissions. That things like that, from this board's standpoint, are. From my standpoint, and if the board agrees with me, that those were inappropriate comments or questions.
I think it would be very difficult for a board that is in, or a commission or a committee, that is engaged in, in discussion. Uh, that they would, that they would know to not ask a question that popped into their head, and they could possibly get the answer in the meeting. I think the, I think the response was, was outstanding, it was, it, that's, you'll have to ask the select board. That was a, that was an excellent response, but, uh, but I don't think it's, it's reasonable to think that people who are engaged in the conversation. Would refrain from asking an obvious question or a question, I don't think the people asking the question thought that they were attacking anyone. They were asking a legitimate question.
And I agree with you, I don't, I don't, I'm not accusing anybody of attacking, okay? What I, what I am saying is that. I think as board chairs, or vice chairs, or whoever's running the meeting. Should be more aware of asking those types of questions in that meeting, and I just, I think that a, a. Letter, a simple letter from this board. Stating that to just maybe. Refresh. And I, and I, I don't disagree, I don't think it was malicious, I don't think it was attacking, I, I just think they were inappropriate questions. That we, our boards and commissions should be careful asking. And, and probably also the select board too, to be perfectly honest with you, when we're having a meeting, sometimes. Maybe, I, you know, I can't think of a, I can't think of one, but we're pretty good about it, I just think that. The boards and commissions need to, need to be a little more aware of those, those types of questions.
I would think that if we didn't think, there's nothing wrong with, with individuals sending, sending a, uh, I didn't think that was appropriate emails. To, to whoever, as your own personal opinion, but I don't think we should be formalizing a letter to go to our boards and commissions. That would, uh, that would tell them how to run their meetings, or what they're allowed to say or not allowed to say. Or, or to even come off at all as chastising them for engaging in discussion.
I, I think they're, I think they're direct, they directly, were directly responsible for them.
That's absolutely true, and I think it would be, I think it would be a negative. To, to have them walking on eggshells as they're engaging in discussion, uh, that's not.
This is gonna be.
Well, that'll be how it's perceived, right, it'll be, well, that, that's my input, I, I think we need to give them as much autonomy as possible.
I agree with that, but I think when they start asking inappropriate questions, or what, you know, or what seemed to be an inappropriate question. Ultimately, it comes down to, to the select board. It ultimately comes down to our responsibility. They, they, whether it's the Parks and Rec, or, uh, Conservation Commission, or whatever it is. They're still, they're still directly under us, and the, the town employees. Are our direct employees, they work directly for us.
Of course, I agree with it, that they all report to us, and they're, they, they serve at our pleasure, for the most part, some of it is statutory. Uh, particularly on the planning commission, um, but that, that's my, my feedback is, I, I don't think. Letter from the select board would be appropriate.
Okay.
I don't have an opinion whether you should write a letter or not, I just wanted to point out the fact that. Um, I'm used to being at the table and asking questions, Hannah's running the meeting, she's not expecting to be asked questions, it's not really part of. I mean, is it part of her job? I'm not really sure, I, I don't know that, um, it's fair to expect her to have answers, or. You know, if, if a board is meeting the planning commission, or whatever board it is, usually they're discussing amongst themselves, and if they don't have the answer, they could say. Could you find out? Um, but putting her on the spot in that moment isn't fair necessarily.
And, and that's probably what I'm going with it more than anything, I, I think that's probably. And what's the board's pleasure, do we wanna, do, do you wanna have public input on this? Or do we wanna just discuss this amongst ourselves? I think this is a board decision that ultimately falls on our shoulders. And wherever we go with it is fine with me, I just, I was. Didn't agree with the nature of. The question, because Tara makes a great point, she's not here to. Answer those questions, nor would Tara be if she were the one running the meeting in Hannah's absence. At this, at this time, that she's doing it, right? W- would Tara be prepared, or should she even be prepared to answer questions at those meetings?
I, I think the better approach is to make sure that both Tara and Hannah know to answer it the way Hannah is. That's a, that's a question for the select board, and just balk on the question. I think that's the appropriate professional response.
What's the board's pleasure?
Unless it was on the agenda with some. Uh, an email to the board about a particular subject. So, you have time to take, like, they shouldn't be getting up out of their meeting to take a go. You know, dig something like that up, I don't think.
I don't think that was the, but the question itself was, do you know, right?
I understand that, I'm just saying, but they couldn't, if she said yes, and somebody could say, well, can I receive it? I'm just saying, it could roll into something more.
Oh, right, so I think, I, I think we, I think we need to be clear that, uh, that, that our, our staff. Should be answering with, that's a question for the select board, and that, that just stops it right there, and I think that's the right response.
My speaker's question. Development review board.
What's the board's pleasure?
Uh, I'm fine with, uh, with, I'm, I'm fine with that.
One of our boards. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't, I also, my, no, Howard Strohmeier, vice chair, development review board. I don't have a problem having a letter sent to us, just reminding us of what Hannah's. Duties and responsibilities for our board is, and as far as we're concerned, she is a board secretary. Period. She doesn't have, in, in her role, it's not right to ask her information about. What goes on in the office, because she is not there in that capacity. I mean, it doesn't have to be a rep, it just has to be a reminder.
That's all I want.
Just a reminder to all the boards, hey. The, Hannah is the board secretary, her responsibilities to you as is as board secretary. Not as, if what you're under. Yes, I mean, yes, oh, that. I just, just a different opinion, if the letter's sent out, that's fine, it's not a, it's not an issue, it's a reminder, sometimes we forget. We are all getting old, so, I mean, it's good to have reminders.
Take care of yourself.
Well, that's it.
And that's, I think that's probably what I was looking for, but maybe I brought it across the wrong way, but I was looking for more of a reminder. To our boards and commissions that, you know, this is what their job is, they're not here for your information, so to speak. This is, this is their job.
And you, yeah.
Excuse me, let me, let me break in for just one second here, there's a couple of people with their hands raised, asking to be able to comment. All through the meeting tonight, so if these people go to get a chance, it would be great, and then I, I have a comment afterwards.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna take public comment on this, I will take comment from, because we took it from Carl, as a, the vice chair, the DRB. I will take it from the chair.
Let me, let me make my comment right now, as the chairman of the planning commission.
Yeah.
When I, when I email the secretary, asking for an agenda item to be placed on the agenda. I don't need feedback, I need the agenda item put on the, on the, on the agenda. With no, no second guessing, and no, no suggestions that we put it off. For another time, let's put it on. for another time. Let's put it on the agenda and and let us do our job. Thank you.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna clarify that one a little bit. I think and Hannah, correct me if I'm wrong, or Fred, correct me if I'm wrong. I think um, that she she informed you that you could not add it to the agenda that had been posted because that agenda had been posted and warned and you didn't have the time to change the agenda before your meeting. Is that correct, Hannah?
It is. I have the emails and I did tell him that if he wanted to, that was his choice.
And um, I believe that she told you that you could certainly add it to your agenda on the night of your meeting. Is that correct, Fred?
No, she agreed that after I after I clarified that we could do that. Um, it was suggested that we postpone discussing that agenda item until you guys ha- have your meeting tonight. Um, and it was uh, it wasn't necessary to postpone it and I wanted to on there. So in the future, if if I'm asking or if somebody's asking for an agenda item, we should get get our agenda item put on on the agenda.
Well, I think she did the right thing by not putting the agenda item on your agenda because you would have had an illegal meeting.
That's fine. That's fine, Mike. But but saying that we didn't the the other option was not clarified until I clarified it. And then then we put the item on.
That's right.
And and I was not when I when I made my comment, I was not calling out Hannah. I was expressing my frustration with the process of of trying to get an agenda item put on the agenda.
That was not the that was not the place to express that. That's my point. My point is, in an open meeting, that was not the place to express what was going on. That that should have come to the select board. In my opinion, and the board can go where they want with this, but in my opinion, that should have come to the select board because she is directly under us, as you are. It shouldn't have been. It should not have been brought out in an open meeting where where you called her out as the administrative assistant on on that meeting. I I I watched the meeting and you called her out as the administrative assistant in that meeting that denied you an agenda item or tried to deny you an agenda item.
Well, in the future, basically, let's talk about the future is when we wanna wanna add an agenda item, we need to be able to add an agenda item. We don't need we don't we don't need feedback on it.
So long as it has not already been posted, then her.
I understand that, Jamie. I understand. I understand that, but there is the option of adding it before before the
Correct.
Before the agenda is accepted.
Correct.
All right, so it's it's so no harm done. We we may as to get the agenda item discussed. And we just needed to clarify uh, the process. Do I need to? Do I need a- as a chairman of the of the planning commission, do I need the chairman of the select board to approve my agenda?
That's not what I'm saying. Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
We have a member of the planning commission with her hand raised. She she would like to speak.
No, I'm just taking board chairs.
Oh, really? Why? Why is this, Mike?
Because it's not. This isn't a public comment session, Fred. And I took Carl and there was other.
You're speaking to the board members as well as as the chairman.
I did not. I spoke to board chairs.
And vice chairs.
Invite in of of boards and commissions.
And vice chairs?
I did not. I did not call out any board members. I said that a letter needed, in my opinion, that a letter needed to be sent to board chairs and board and commission chairs.
This is this is exactly, you know, the it's an example of all the frustration that's going on in 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 the town, trying to trying to even to work with the town. Is is the communication is a little bit off. And decisions are being made and you know, it's a it's not involving, not really involving your 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 boards and commissions.
You, oh, yeah, no, I that's that's a huge misstatement, Fred.
It is.
It's a huge misstatement on your part. And um, this is ju- it was just a simple reminder. That's all it was. Because because there's a certain, there's a significant chance, significant chance that some of the things that are happening are borderline workplace harassment. Okay, and that was one of them.
I personally, I think that's a that's an overstatement. And I should hear from people with their hands up. We do have the leeway on a select board to hear people who want to be heard on each agenda item. That we do have the ability to do that. And I think what I'm hearing is you don't want that to happen.
I didn't address the boards. I addressed board chairs. Right? And I and I did allow Carl to speak as the vice chair from the DRB. And I did allow Fred to speak as the chair of the.
Well, to be clear, you asked the board if we were okay with.
And that's true. No, that's right, Bob, because I don't want to make that decision myself. Okay, I could. As the chair, I have that right. But I didn't want to do that because I certainly want to give the select board the chance for everyone to speak. Our our.
Select board member, I I my recommendation is that we hear anyone who wants to speak. I think we run into trouble when we 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 when we don't allow the public comment or the comments from our boards, commissions, committees. We need to hear each other.
We have public comment coming up.
Well, it's it's a matter of topic. We didn't wait for public comment to hear from uh, to hear from some members. And this is the this is the discussion. That's just my opinion.
Well, and and you I did not wait. You're right, because I I let the board chair from the planning commission and the vice chair from the DRB speak on there because that's how I addressed it. I didn't I didn't address.
Well, hang on. We didn't call on board chair and vice chair. Um, it's so you weren't you you didn't solicit feedback from chair and vice chair. But Carl raised his hand and wanted to speak. Now, he could have been a different member of the DRB and he may not have been the vice chair, right? So it it wasn't that we called on a chair and vice chair and called on each one of our committees and commissions about this topic. The people who spoke volunteered to speak. And now we're saying others who are volunteering to speak are not going to speak.
I think.
That's my position.
I think Carl identified himself as the vice chair of the DRB. And then I asked if the board was comfortable with him speaking before I allowed him to speak.
Right. In my in my decision, in my decision to say that I per- that I thought it was perfectly reasonable had nothing to do with him being vice chair. It had to do with somebody who had feedback.
Hmm, and that's fine.
Just just my opinion.
Recommendation, what's the board's pleasure?
I think we should hear public comment now is the recommendation. Or not public comment, comment from our from anyone who's got their hand up, who's a member of any of our boards, committees or commissions.
Any more feedback?
I don't really like to stifle our committees because you've chosen them to take and speak up for us on town subjects, so. Many people have their hand up, Hannah. And if if that person's a member of the of of said commission or subcommittee, I think they should have the right to vote or right to speak, rather.
Any more feedback, Brian?
I'm okay with hearing from members of the boards and commissions. Because it's on topic and it can be related.
And the only reason I didn't want it was I didn't want to draw this out all night long.
No, and I I understand that.
You realize it would be done.
We wouldn't, right back. Hannah allow it. Angie, okay, you can allow it, Hannah.
Can you tell her she can go ahead?
Uh, you can go ahead. Put your hand up.
Hi, Michelle Peckrow in the planning commission. Uh, I agree with what Bob was saying. As being on a committee, if we can't discuss and ask questions, I don't know what we're doing there. Nobody attacked Hannah or Tara. And if they felt that way, I'm sorry, that's not how it was meant. Alls we asked of Hannah was, do you know? And all she had to say was, I don't know, or as she did, refer to the select board. That's fine. That should be the end of it. I can't believe I just listened to this conversation drag out for as long as I did just now. And we're trying to do our job. You're trying to do our job. We don't need you telling us what their jobs are. If we can't have an open communication in our meeting, then I don't even know why we have an open meeting. It was very simple. And if you want to say now what Tara's job is, what Hannah's job is, and that if they are asked a question and they don't know, they can say, ask the select board, ask the DRB. It's as simple as that. It shouldn't we shouldn't be going down this rabbit hole.
Thank you, Michelle. Are you done?
Yes, I am.
I don't want to cut you off. I don't want to cut you off.
No, I'm no, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There is one more handed out on the board. Do you want to accept it?
He is technically. Haven't they haven't had their first meeting yet, but.
She is on. She's on the conservation.
Yeah. Hi, sorry. Uh, again, I'm just like looking for more clarification tonight. Um, I'm just gonna say, there feels like a lot of tension. And you know what? The business of government sometimes that's that's hard stuff. And I get it totally. Um, but I also want to say, not just as a member of the conservation commission, but also as just a resident of town hall. One of the things that I really appreciate is being able to just like kind of come in the town hall some days and have a conversation with Tara or Hannah or anyone else. Like, that's something about living here that matters to me. It's really great. It's like being able to ask questions. And if somebody doesn't have an answer, I totally get it. And if it's the sort of thing that is a select board matter, I completely get that also, and I respect that. But I just want to like have some clarification again as a member of a conservation commission or even as just like a citizen here, right? Um, if I had the ability to come in now and ask questions because I think that we all probably agree, like hearing from everybody, that transparency is important. We want that. But I want to make sure like, you know, and if Tara can answer a question, I trust her to say like, that's not a question for me. It's for somebody else. But I would at least like to be able to broach that with her. Um, yeah, I just want to make sure that we have like good, open communication here. And maybe I've misheard what's happening tonight. But I just want to be able to have conversations when they're needed and trust someone to say, that's not a question for me. It's for somebody else. Thanks.
Thank you.
I absolutely welcome questions anytime. That's that's not where I was going with what I said. Um, I think when the questions are um, accusatory or um, part of a bigger picture, that's that's really what we're talking about right now. It's not just asking a question. It's asking a question to get an answer that could possibly be misconstrued as something someone did wrong. And that's where all this tension is coming from.
Tara, thank you for that. I appreciate that seriously. And that's kind of my thought, but I just want to like be very transparent and straight with that. And I appreciate um, all the time that you'd like to sit with me in your office to answer questions. Thank you.
Oh, definitely. Anytime.
I agree with you. I mean, questions should be answered when they can be. I just think when you're in a meeting, that's not the time to ask ask those kinds of questions. And I just think and and I really wasn't trying to reprimand anybody or whatever. I was simply asking the board to send a reminder to, you know, board chairs and and what commission chairs and what, you know, what to think about when they're asking a question. And I totally agree with you, Bob, that in the heat of the moment, when you're in a meeting and and you're you're certainly having a discussion, which by the way, the the planning commission meeting was uh, some great discussion and some and some great points. Um, it's just a general reminder that be careful what you ask and and who you ask it of in that open meeting.
In that regard, I think we've made that point.
I do.
Pretty pretty solidly tonight. I don't think a letter is really wrong. And I I also don't want to, you know, my problem with the letter was that it kind of formalizes uh, putting people on eggshells. We a a a simple reminder, which I'm sure everybody got from tonight's meeting. It's a is is all that would be necessary. And I would also say that it it um, I I'm not advocating for putting our staff on the spot because I don't like that, just like you don't like that. But at the same time, you're gaining experience and becoming more seasoned in the job. Knowing that having that, the next time you get that question comes, it will be, that's a question for the select board without hesitation. And that there was and then we're not we're not disincentizing the discussion, uh, but we're also helping our staff grow.
I agree with that.
Could I interject one? I'm a lot cooler. Um, and I just wanted to clarify that I I did I did uh, make the comment uh, about my frustration with trying to get a agenda item placed on the agenda. Um, and I did state administrative assistant or needing permission from administrative assistant. And I did not mean to state that. And and I clarified at that moment that I I was not complaining about any of of the staff. Um, it was I was expressing my frustration with with the process. And that's it. And I and and I apologized to Hannah if uh, she she felt that I was attacking her. Um, it was it was a matter of, uh, you know, just the 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 level of frustration had had boiled over a little bit and um, I didn't choose my words more carefully.
So I'm gonna I I want to clarify one thing, Fred, that Hannah hasn't expressed, has not expressed anything to, as far as I know, to any of the board members, including myself um, about feeling attacked. That was something that that I felt, and I don't think it was an attack. I just think it was, as you just stated, uh, an ex- a misuse of words because it was in the heat of the moment. And Bob absolutely touched on that when you're having a having a discussion that things can get carried away. And I just wanted to bring it to light because I do not want to go through a a harassment, workplace harassment um, complaint. I I don't want to do that again. And that's that's all I was looking for, Fred. I'm not wasn't trying to reprimand you, wasn't um, just just wasn't trying to do that. I just wanted to 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 have a clarification about what what was, and I don't want to use the word appropriate. That's not a that's not a really good word to use. I just I just wanted to have a a little clarification given and and, you know, I I didn't want to do it in an email to to people, Bob. You know, emails can be so the 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 manner of the mannerism of an email, right? How how do you take it? Is the person really really angry or are they being reasonable? You know, it's it's just really difficult. And and the letter is probably not even that much better than than an email because you don't know how to take it. It's like it's like taking a text message. How do you take the text message? Is it good or bad? Right? So the discussion, this discussion probably much better than than a letter warning, you know, to be to be perfectly honest with you. It's not it's not a reprimand. That's not what I'm trying to do. I mean, because that's that's a whole different ball of wax. I was just trying to bring the situation to light that I noticed. And I think that's um, my job as the board chair to, when I see something like that, bring it up, just.
So I I think we've gone far enough on this. I think it's time to move on.
Me too.
Uh, so I say we close this discussion and move on.
Can I make a point of clarification on the policy language that we were talking about earlier?
Which policy?
The the youth policy. I thought it was a state statute, but it followed. The the use policy. That I thought it was a state statute, but it follows it under municipal law. Under the House Ethics Manual, there states, no political use of building or equipment.
Does that, if that has reference material, then we should probably email that to Tara and have her in in input it. But if it doesn't have the reference to it.
It just said it's in the House Ethics Manual, and then I had to find it in within the manual.
So if it's a health ethics manual, and that's just, I I would say, just give her the title of that. And then we probably want to include a statement that says we will adhere to.
Okay, yeah, I've just. Wanted to, wanted to clarification as far as.
It's a good find.
And that that's for everyone's good talking facility use agreement, especially moving on.
Got it. She wrote it down.
Look and see how I can share.
Okay.
She wrote it down.
She got it.
I got it.
Which brings up Old Town Hall discussion.
Well, can we start? Uh, first, a really important point that I would like to make regarding minutes that are taking the select board minute meetings. Um, because this was brought up in the last presentation regarding the Old Town Hall. Uh, when I first came into this position, we reform ended the way the minutes were taken. And then in multiple meetings after that, the board confirmed that they liked the way the meetings were kept, that they should be summarized. And then every week from there on out, the board has approved the minute with very little edits, questions, concerns. Um, so I would just like to mention that if there is a problem with the minutes or if community has concerns with them. Please email us or email the board and express your concerns um, so that they can address them. Publicly shaming administrative staff or naming uh, previous staff in open meetings is completely inappropriate and it shouldn't be happening. Um, to what that said, on July twenty seventh to uh, twenty twenty three, I presented the select board with an idea for a community center. Encourage everyone to watch that video because if you have not, I cannot share all that information tonight. Um, I'm just gonna try to answer somebody, um, some questions that have come up since the last two weeks. Um, in that meeting, if you watch it, the board, you will see the board made a motion that by all accounts was pretty unclear. I'm human and I may have misinterpreted the board's wishes. That, however, is entirely up to the select board. Um, I am not elected and therefore they will decide if I did something outside of my authority or not. And we'll handle it in private with the same respect any other employee would get. So, moving on. These are just facts about the Old Town Hall and the community center discussion. The, something important to notice is that the fiscal year twenty five budget that we just put out includes no additional spending for the Old Town Hall or community center. It's only budgeted for the current use of electric and heat, um, which has been on now for two years, almost two years that we've moved out of the building. Um, so and although I brought this issue of the Old Town Hall to the board. April fourteenth, twenty twenty two, and again in September of twenty twenty two. Until the public spectacle of my presentation idea was made, no one offered ideas or help when it came to doing anything with the Old Town Hall. The building still fits as we left it nearly two years ago. The expenses were. In an occupied building, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. That is heat and electric. Um, so when we were occupying it in fiscal year twenty-two, it was twenty-eight hundred dollars. Fiscal year twenty-three, which we were there for part of, I believe, if I'm thinking correctly, um, was seventeen hundred and sixty-five. So what we're seeing is a decrease, a huge decrease in electric costs, but the heat is still the same. Um, so that that could vary depending on what we do with the building. Um, I want to also say that the select board and myself had always planned to get further public input. Um, for example, the B C R C currently is um, getting to kick off their study on the village center. And offering technical assistance on improvements. They'll be doing feasibility studies, uh, surveys and other other public outreach as part of this project. Um, the grant that keeps being mentioned uh, was from the collaborative, the Partnership for Success. That is the same grant that has funded many of the upgrades to the skate park. Um, the grant application cited food insecurity amongst our youth and the need for programming to address the needs of and provide social resources. For the underserved populations of our community. The idea would be to install the kitchen with the use of that grant money. And contact area agencies such as the school and Head Start to offer the space. They would run their programs with the groups meeting the requirements of that grant while still being able to offer the kitchen to other agencies such as Powell Seniors Group. Who could utilize the kitchen on other days. And I know they they really enjoy cooking for election. Um, they also do a Tuesday group at the firehouse and they have expressed really wanting to move away from that and get into a different. Um, different place.
Different venue.
A different venue, yeah. Um, they they do multiple senior groups on Tuesdays at the firehouse. Um, I was asked by a citizen why the wastewater repeater could not be moved. So I reached out to Darcy, our wastewater treatment operator. And just asked her simply, what do you think about moving it? Um, she said that it may be too costly to move the repeater because the antenna will need to be moved. And repositioned as well as all the signals from each applicable station will need to be tested and confirmed. It's possible that alterations to the station antennas and or equipment might need to be upgraded. Um, and there are so many variables, she really wasn't sure on what the cost would be, but if the board wishes, she will start looking into that. Um, I have not gotten cost estimates on repairs yet. Uh, this is mainly because we may be eligible for a municipal energy resilience program. Um, which basically would provide a an assessment and then qualify us for more funding to implement. Whatever repairs are identified as necessary. And that would address a lot of the structural repairs that need to be made, um, the foundation and that that sort of stuff. The mold inspections that I had done, it was actually late August of twenty-two. They produced a figure of twelve thousand and twenty-eight dollars from surfrow to clean up, to remediate the building as it sits right now. That doesn't include, you know, if we were to paint or replace the flooring, the mold would be, the mold levels would be much lower. Um, in that case, so that would change that number. Um, I have shared with the board the mold report, the old mold report and the newest one. Um, and I shared that with a community member who requested it as well. So if anybody wants to see that, just please ask and I'll send it. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to say that the town attorney is now researching the community's church and the Old Town Hall. Um, so he will be able to offer the select board all of the array of options. And that is all I have on Old Town Hall today.
Thanks, Tara.
Just do one comment on it, on the on the ARPA. Uh, I did want to address ARPA because there was some suggestion that we would use that for there. And that might be the right way to go. But uh, but we really need to compare opportunity costs. And that was part of what I was talking about in the eleventh meeting. Um, if uh, uh, you know, we have limited ARPA funds left. It's it's not, it's not insignificant, but we do have limited ARPA funds left. And if there's better uses for it. Such as uh, uh, I don't know, first responders, if there was equipment they needed, that's potentially life-saving equipment. Or if uh, I, you, let me put it a different way. If I had a really great idea. And i- it cost X amount of dollars and it would save one hundred lives, I have to be willing to walk away from that idea. If somebody else comes up with X dollars and it saves five hundred lives, that's what an opportunity cost is. We have limited resources. We, even if it's, even if it's ARPA funds, or even if it's uh, grant funds. Uh, these are all limited resources and we, I I believe it's probably better to. Leave this discussion until the B C R C does their, does their work and comes back with recommendations. Because that will cover all of the town green. And that's really what we're hiring them for. Um, and the final comment, I'll say, is uh, uh. Uh, is coming up with the community center, I think we saw from some of the feedback today. That Tara, you correctly identified a need for a community center. Um, uh, where we, where we, and I believe it was more the board than our staff, more the board, is we were out of sequence. All right, we we need to sequence our work correctly. And we need to make sure that we're talking to the planning commission and that we're talking to others to make sure that. Uh, that one, we're not doing something redundant. And we're not doing something that's going to need to be replaced or torn out or. Or or will not, uh, you know, doesn't adhere to the recommendations we're getting. I mean, we are paying to. I know it's a grant, but still we're paying for some recommendations to come from the B C R C. Let's get those first. Is my, is my recommendation to the board. We we table this until we get those recommendations.
Believe that's where we're going, between that and uh, Bob Fisher, under his investigation.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, we still might find out that we can't sell it, but but we want to hear that. I was like, I don't believe selling with easements is is. Is all that big of a deal. And I don't even think the center marker is a big deal. In fact, I think that's probably a selling point. When you look at Monument Drive, that Catamount statue is probably a great, great selling point. I know we don't have a Catamount statue. But that's probably a great selling point for that house, but they don't own it. It's 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 it's, I don't know who owns it, but it's not owned by the house, but.
Those are all questions that the lawyer will end up answering and getting back to us, so.
Exactly. So we we'll get those answers first. It may, it may come back that we can't sell it, in which case we do have to think of something else to do. But we need to get that definitive answer first.
I'll, I'll give you that. It's just, I thought we had gotten a definitive answer at one point from Bob. On just the building. Now we're asking him to research the church and.
No, I don't, I don't believe we ever got, unless I'm wrong.
I thought Bob was pretty clear.
It was a realtor who said it would be difficult to sell because of these hurdles.
But now, we own the building outright and we could sell the building, but the property with the whole church, that we couldn't sell the property without figuring out a division.
Or coming up with a variance for use, a a subdivision or whatever. Those are the things that we pay lawyers to do.
I thought Bob also stated as far as the shared well and whatnot. I mean, there was, there was a couple of other things that were stated in that.
Well, hang on, we get, we need to be, hang on, we need to be careful of making declarative statements of fact that aren't fact. And I'm not convinced that that's a fact.
We're waiting on the lawyer. All this, we can go round and round.
No, I'm just.
It's not going to solve anything. We have to wait for the lawyer. Let the lawyer do the research and get back to us. Otherwise, you're just, we're going round and round for nothing. So it's up that we have to wait for more information from the lawyer and move on. Exactly, Brian. I I agree totally. Been here long enough. Exactly. Beating one dead horse after another. I do want to, I do want to clarify something. Um, and it was in something I read, Donna, you had written. About the church and who owns the church or the property or whatever. So we have the the town, when I say we, the town, you and all of us. Have been told. I can't tell you how many different things about who owns the church and the property that the church sits on.
Is that something I said?
No, it wasn't. It was in a Facebook post. You had a social media post.
About?
About the church and, yeah. So. I think it's kind of inappropriate to call out a member of the public who hasn't. I just want to, we we brought up the church and I, and I just want to clarify. It wasn't inappropriate at all. I just, you had a question about that, about the both.
Well, hang on, we just, I think it is inappropriate because you're answering a question that was posted to Facebook.
Okay.
If it comes up in the meeting.
Yeah, if he chooses to ask it in the meeting, that's her business. But to bring up something posted on Facebook in a meeting is inappropriate. Okay. We've established that numerous times. So what I will say is the town, when we asked Bob Fisher. Um, and this is where the town hall came back into play. We asked Bob Fisher because we were at a standstill, the board, the town. Was at a standstill on who actually owns the church and the church property. No one knows. There is not a public record anyplace that anybody can find.
Do we want to bring in the church and have a conversation with them, with the board?
That's where I'm going. That's where I'm going. So, so we decided to reach out to Bob Fisher. Um, to do some deed research, title research, whatever you want to call it. To try to determine who owns the property. Yeah, which is probably first and foremost before you can do anything with any of it. Sell it or whatever, right?
That needs to be the, you have a definitive answer.
That's right. We need to have a definitive answer on who actually owns the. Property, the church, the building, the carriage barn, all of the above. Because, so we're wait, we're waiting on a lawyer, which we've already established that. So I just wanted to be clear on that. The the, you know, no one's trying to cut the church out. No one's going to do anything with the church. And that's where the town hall conversation came back up. Um, partially where it came back up. And I I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we just, we know who owns what because. I don't think any one of us sitting here can say who owns the church or the property or the town hall property that it sits on or any of them. Right. For that matter. And that's the first thing that we need to find out is who actually owns that piece of property. And I just wanted to be clear on that. Is there any more? Discussion on the Old Town Hall? Okay, open up public comment. Under public comment, actually, this can go on in the Old Town Hall as well. It doesn't matter where it goes. I have an agreement here between the B C R C and the town that needs to be signed. Um, for the execution of the, the grant. It's the board's pleasure.
Make a motion to accept the grant from the B C R C.
So it's the municipal planning grant, the B C R C is going to carry the grant now.
So this is an agreement with the town and the B C R C.
It's an agreement.
Execute the. Yep.
Right, yeah. And I can read everything if anybody wants me to read it, but. It's just the agreement between the B C R C and the town of Powell to. Excuse me, execute the grant.
Uh, which is hoping that we, uh, approve the contract, it is contract, right? I make a motion that we approve the contract with the B C R C, execute the municipal planning activities.
Technically, it says agreement for services.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the agreement for services with B C R C. In relation to uh, their work with the, through the municipal planning grant.
Second.
Any more discussion? I'll look in favor.
And they reference that in the uh, in the planning commission meeting on Tuesday.
Public comment.
Sorry, guys, my um, remarks don't come up.
So Jim?
I'm sorry, my my, I can't get the reasoning to, or the more to come up to put the hand up because I. Um, clicked on the chat thing, so I'll wait till you say that you'll accept me to come in.
Yeah, Donna had her hand up, I believe, before you did, Jim. That's all, sorry.
Okay, no, thank you very much. I'll wait.
Donna, Donna Lozong.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Um, from my vantage point as someone watching at home, not someone sitting where you guys are sitting, and the view may be very different. This is what I saw. I saw Tara's presentation. I saw events, lectures, markets, social clubs listed as what people decided in the survey. They wanted the Old Town Hall for. Then I saw a meeting where there was that whole discussion about the next steps. Then all of a sudden I heard that there's a grant. I would have really appreciated, and I got to tell you, I've been talking to people in town, they would have appreciated it too. Put something on Facebook in the banner, public invited to discuss Old Town Hall. We were told it was for possibly seniors to use. But I I wish you guys would actually read what the grant is for specifically, what that specific grant is for. Uh, there's been absolutely, you know, it would. You you said tonight about a feasibility study. Did you reach out to the Vermont Department of Health and USDA? Because I did. And there are some herbos that you have when you take an old building, especially one with mold. That was, wasn't safe enough for town staff, but apparently is safe for children to make food in. Um, you may need other things like a telephone for emergencies. You may want to reach out and find out why schools don't allow the use of their kitchens. I did, and it's for liability issues. I'm not here if you've already talked to your insurance company about what that might look like over there. Um, and I think that, you know, you really have to. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I really am not. I think you guys do a thankless job. But there seems to be this, I want to say suppressing of information or. You know, you two seem like you're fairly smart women. People should be able to ask questions without feeling like it's a personal attack. I should be able to ask the board something without feeling like it doesn't matter what you say, or you don't have the right to say it, or just. Shut up and go with what we say. And and people are getting the sense that that's what's going on. And, and people are getting the sense that that's what's going on. And I, I think that you should know that. And I think that a lot of this could have been avoided if we just would have had more transparency in the grant, more discussion publicly, and allowed people to voice their opinions for or against it. There are people that still don't know what's in the grant, and that's really unfair. It's really unfair when you're talking about all of these, you know, issues that Bob mentioned and other people have mentioned. I don't understand why we can't, no, I don't understand why the public can't give their opinions. And all it would have taken is to say, everybody come to a meeting, like you did with the Panal Historical Society, like you did with the New Town Hall. It's not unreasonable. I assure you, it is not. And there needs to be more transparency and there needs to be less, whatever this dynamic is of, you can't say that, don't ask that question. If you do, we're going to argue against you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anybody else in the audience?
We had Jim.
Tim? Yeah, I was, I was checking in the room here first. Jim Coesus?
He's still there?
Oh, yeah, I unmuted him, so.
Yeah, he's still in here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, um, muted instead of unmuted, but Jim Coesus North Mason Hill wrote, um, "Thank you very, guys, very much for a very interesting evening tonight." Um, but my, my only one question is, um, are you accepting the recommendation from the planning commission to, um, halt or, um, halt and to cease having any further, um, actual, um, activities or discussions on a community center until such time as the, um, B C R C grant is compiled and presented to the town. Thank you. Have a good night.
That's what we say.
Thanks, Jim.
I guess that raises a, um, am I free to speak? Uh, it, it, does that raise a question that we need, do we need an actual, uh, a, uh, a formal motion to put discussions about disposal of the, or disposition of the Old Town Hall on hold until the end of the, I think we agreed to it, but I don't know if we, I don't know if we need a motion to do it, but, but it sounds like, uh, from public comment, there's still some confusion as to whether or not we're moving forward.
I don't think that.
I thought we were waiting.
I don't think we're moving forward.
And I'm okay with it not being a motion, but let's make a declarative statement. We will put on hold any discussions about how to use the Old Town Hall until we get the recommendations from the B C R C when they do their municipal planning grant work.
Well, we'll, we'll table the discussion until further information comes from B C R C and our attorney.
So do we wanna make a motion on that, or do we wanna?
Easier.
I, I, I think there's, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure how to say it, but we, we, I think it needs to be definitive so that we, no one's guessing about what we're doing.
So can we halt to give us time to figure out whether we need to make a motion or just a declaration, bring it back to the next regular meeting? For the next, but, but can we halt for the next two weeks until we decide exactly what?
Our motion is gonna be?
What our motion, whether we need one? Would that be a fair?
Uh, can we make a, can we just make a, a declarative statement? I think we ought to, that we will not be moving forward with what to do with the Old Town Hall until at least we hear back from the B C R C on their work and get their recommendations. I, I think that's, if at that point we still haven't got an answer from the lawyer, I think, I think we're getting an answer from a lawyer long before the B C R C is done with the municipal planning.
I just wanted to both of them.
Both of them need to be there.
The player.
So if we just make that statement, I think it removes the ambiguity in the, in, uh, town. And then we, in, in, and i- in the end, we may end up with a community center in the Old Town Hall, but then we will have gone through all of the options with that money. We will have heard from the public. We will have heard the B C R C recommendation, and we would know from the lawyer whether or not we can or can't sell that building, and whether or not that's even, even an option.
Yeah, because right now everything is a hundred percent speculation.
That's correct.
We just make a statement, we're not gonna speculate on anymore. We're waiting for the B C R C and hear back from our lawyer to see what our options are.
Let's get all our options on the table before we make any decisions. It's really, is really what that comes down to.
Like, the only, the only question that I have about that is, and I don't disagree. The only question that I have, I think, Bob, is, is I don't, I don't know if the B C R C is working specifically on that unless we.
No, they're doing the whole, they're doing the whole town green.
The whole town green, but are they, are they specifically gonna come back? And I don't know this. This is a question for the B C R C. It's your question with Jonathan Kober, right? Are they gonna come back with a specific recommendation for that building, or is it gonna be?
That, that's not, their focus is not that building, but their focus is the whole town green. And that would mean, that, I think that encompasses that. And they may say that would be a great place for a business, that'll be a great little place for, I mean, they, they may need all of these things.
We've been speculating, but they can't really formulate an idea till they know the realities of what can and can't be done with the property anyhow. They're gonna kind of be waiting, so.
Well, so, so I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to look ahead, right, and say, we wait, and I, and I'm not opposed to wait, but we wait for the B C R C to come up with a recommendation, and then their, whatever they come up with on this, with their grant, really doesn't bring that into, that really doesn't bring the town hall, the Old Town Hall into life. So you know what I mean? And I, and I'd hate to be in that position. So my question is, do we ask the B C R C in that, in their scope of their work?
That's a good.
Come up with a recommendation.
Well, hey, we, we should ask what they believe their scope of their work is, and, and what, what we expect for the output. Does it include that? I don't wanna add more to it because I think we already have an agreement with them.
And associated with the grant.
Yeah.
It has very specific things listed in it. I don't have it in front of me, otherwise I could share that, but.
And I have, I have the grant, I don't have the, I don't have that.
But I think we got a couple of other things out of sequence too, right? There, there's more costs, there's foundation work, there's, there's other things that I think we need estimates on.
Yeah, I just.
We oughta, I think.
My, my only question was, you know, I, I don't disagree with what you're asking. It's, but do we ask them to specifically come back with a recommendation for that building, or do we wait?
How about we just ask the question of, will your recommendation include, but will your output include recommendations for that specific building?
Sorry, that, that covers this.
For that building.
I, I think that would cover it, sure. I, I just, I don't wanna wait, you know, and then find out that that's not, they didn't even focus on that. They were focused on something else. That, that's my only, you know, here we make a declaration, right, and their, their scope, you know, I would like, I'd like to wait, and I think we can ask the B C R C that and get an answer by next regular meeting.
That's true, but remember, there are other open questions. What is the full cost? What is the full cost of, of remediation, of floors, of?
Right.
Yeah, and of, uh, uh, foundation work, which I think we.
Well, I think those are questions that you would then ask after you hear what their recommendation is.
Right, I, I thoroughly believe that, that we could wait two weeks because we're not gonna jump in here, we're not gonna have a meeting, so nothing's gonna happen in the next two weeks on this, and we wait for the B C R C, wait for an answer to the question that we'd like to ask, will your recommendation, your scope of what you're doing, give us an answer to that question, then bring it back two weeks from now and say, okay, we'll make this declarative statement because they have said yes, they're going to, or no, they're not, or whatever, whatever they answered.
Unfortunately.
And I think Jonathan would give us that answer. Um, Ellen?
Is it still public comment? You guys kind of floated off.
No, it's still public comment.
All right. Ellen's turn later. So a couple of things. The mold in the Old Town Hall, that was tested. We stayed in there for several years and none of us are dead from it. It wasn't that bad. It wasn't great, but it wasn't that bad. We had to stay there. So there's a big deal out of the mold issue. That's not really a big deal. We had to put in, I think, we put in ten grand or something, did the plastic, did whatever. Everything, it's better now than it's been. Um, we moved all the old stuff from that Old Town Hall. Mold spores right down into here. So, you know, it couldn't have been that bad if we moved all our old stuff down here. We had to move the records down here, which are old. Everything has mold. This already has mold. You just don't know it yet. It happens. Um, in regards to grants and the, the green, the, whatever you guys are calling it from B C R C. Um, that includes, and what's going on down here at the, um, old tennis court with the project. They've done an amazing job. But I don't remember having a public input on that either, uh, that is town property. Um, I think it's a great thing that, please, Jen, if you're watching, you've done a wonderful job down there, and anybody that's been involved, the kids have a place to go. Um, but, so does that mean she has to halt? Or it's also because B C R C's doing the Senate, because you just approved one. So I'm just, that's my comment.
So I believe the only thing that we're halting is on the town, the Old Town Hall. Uh, as far as the green, is how we stated that.
I think we give it two weeks to the next regular meeting and then come back and we'll get an answer from the B C R C. We'll have, we'll have a definitive answer from them. We'll stop speculating on what's gonna happen. We'll have, we'll have definitive answers on a lot of things. Um, Jenny, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry. I thought I was showing your hand up.
I, I thought about it, but I decided it's not worth it. That's a comment.
Now I just have, I'm saying, I have a question. Um, would it, would it be possible, sorry, would it be possible to add? I know you guys already have really long agendas, but to add grants, and it could, it could either be grants. We're applying for one. We got one, we got declined. There's nothing, no change. And then it.
Oh, is it an agenda item?
Yeah, it, the public, like, oh, hey, they're going after X grant. Oh, hey, they, I heard them talk about that grant. They got that grant. I think it might just bring things full circle to people that are watching at home, because if you guys are talking about it, you say, yeah, we'll apply that. You may never know until things are already happening. It's just an idea. It might help the people at home that are in the know.
No, I think it's, I think it's a fair, fair question, and I think it's probably something that can be added on every agenda because it's probably not gonna be spoken about two, three, four times a year, you know, I mean, um, and that's probably, that's probably something that, that Joel gets a lot of grants from, you know, for, for our town highways. That, and you're probably absolutely right, that a lot of residents and taxpayers don't know that we have be, because it's spoken about one time, we got a $250,000 grant to fix Culver on Mount Anthony Road, right? And then we speak about it when it's, when we're done with it, that this was paid for by the grant. So there's a whole window of months and months of time, or in this case, it was years, compared, um, that before the grant was expended.
And if there isn't anything, it's just a quick nothing. There's no.
Right, this is bottom piece of paper.
But I'm not a grant, I'm not a grant expert, but I believe there are different types of grants. When you're talking about infrastructure, it's a very different process. Uh, and when you're talking about parks, it's a very different process than it is with, uh, with municipal resources, buildings and things like that. These are, these are very different things, and they don't all fall into the same category.
Uh, and I, that's absolutely true, but I think we could certainly put it on the agenda that said, we have, excuse me, we have a grant for, um, ditching on Hidden Valley Road. Wait, and, and, or we have a grant for, um, adding, we have a $15,000 grant to add more, to add five slides for children ages seven and under on the park, Rex and Parks, Park and Rex down here. That, that's kind of what we asked for, right?
Yeah, just to have things come full circle instead of looking at grants, oh, you've got on which one, well, we don't know. We don't know.
I, I think that's fair. I think, and I think that's probably a really good suggestion, actually. Is there any more public comments?
Yes, one person has a hand up.
Hi, Michelle Peckroll, Planning Commission again. Um, I think with the town hall, we should still have the attorney do the research because that may help us and the B C R C come up with ideas, possible ideas for the town hall, but we would need to know the status of the building and the land, and I guess also knowing the expenses, if we wanna put anything into the building, so that would help us with our planning grant. Um, the other thing is, what is the status of the grant for the kitchen when we don't have a community center?
Um, we, we have not, we do not have a, we do not have a signed agreement.
No executed.
It's not an executed grant. As we have time. Michelle?
Okay.
Okay, so.
So there's no grant that we have to worry about that we have, that we have no use for?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. That, and that was what I had asked Hannah, and she said, ask the select board, so here we are.
If I under, uh, if it's all right with me, if I understood it correctly, it was a reimbursement grant, which means if we didn't adhere to their contract, then, then, uh, they would not disperse the funds. So I, so hopefully that becomes a point.
Right. But there's not an executed grant at this time.
Thank you. Just wanted to find out. Appreciate it.
Mike, Joel wants to say something.
Things about Joel.
Excuse me, I just want, I have one more.
Jim, Jim, Joel's, Joel's got the floor, sorry. Joel Burton?
Go ahead, I.
You can, should we set them grants for a certain amount of time? A lot of them are like thirty-six months or whatever. So it doesn't really hurt to get the grant and have it sit there. If you don't use it by the recommended time, you lose it anyhow. It's like our culverts and we were on both culverts, actually, right on the last year, we had to have them done or lose them. Um, it, it, it doesn't, you know, in other words, you get the grant, you don't have to run right out and use it within six months or twelve months. You usually have, every grant's different with a certain amount of time, and if you don't use it, it goes back.
Do you need to make me get my glasses on?
Yeah, it's not like a big, big thing, you know what I mean? It's better to, a lot of times I put in for grants, I put in for them, you know, there's a good chance to get them, and then you go from there. If you didn't, you just, you know, you wouldn't.
You might miss an opportunity.
You'd miss the opportunity.
I've, I've been through this grant ten times in the last five days, and I did not see a timeframe on it. Do you recall?
It's a year.
It's a year? Okay.
And there's, um, reporting deadlines and, and meetings, so I participate in as part of the grant.
So it doesn't serve anything. We either use it or it goes back.
And that's, that's a great point, Joel. Actually, I don't, I don't think that's a bad point.
No, it's a, it's a good point. Um, I think we need to be careful, though. Somebody's grants come with contracts, and we need to understand what we're signing up for in the contract.
So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to bring this, I'd like to research this grant out a little bit more and have a date, how many months, if there is a contract as Bob stated in this grant, and then bring it back to the board. And, and if there's no contract, you know, if, if, if we were to accept the contract or accept the grant. and not use it, and there's no consequences, then I, I would think that we could accept the grant, sign the grant. If, you know, as long as it wasn't going to cost us any money, because like Joel said, did we really want to lose? Because if the B C R C comes back and says that this is a, a good use for the, for the property, right, and as a town, we decide that.
Those are two different questions, though. If they come back and say that that's a good use of the property, we still have to read that contract and make sure that we agree with the terms in it. You can have a community center without the contract and without the grant. So, uh, we need to make sure that we're not signing up to something that we don't want to sign up to, and we have to make sure the grant applications.
That's what I tried to clear about, Bob, is that we look at this grant, and, and we have two weeks to research the grant out. You know, bring it back at the next regular meeting, and we say, okay, there's no consequences to sign this. There are any consequences to sign this grant for the town, other than if we don't use it, it reverts back to the collaborative. Right? If there aren't any consequences. And, and then if the B C R C comes back and says, well, the best thing to do is to do this, that, or the other thing, and it's not a community center, then we just let the grant go back with, with no consequences incurred. But if we don't do something with the grant, and that's what they say, then we lose that.
Again, we need to be very careful. We need to be very careful.
I don't disagree. That's what I mean. We have two weeks to research it out. And I think in two weeks, somebody could certainly research this out and see exactly what the consequences or no consequences are of, of accepting this grant.
What was it, a $5,000 grant?
$5,000.
So it's, it's not, you're right, it's not a lot of money, it's just, and, and that, um, uh, and I, and I, so the, the point being is, my only point was that we need to make sure that we agree to the terms, because I don't think any of us have really gone through the terms.
No, I, I, I have it. I, I totally agree. And I think each one of us should read this and go through the terms. We all have the grant. I mean, the grant's out in the public. Certain portions, certain portions of it, some of it falsely, but that's okay. Is there any more public comment?
Just, just one more minute?
Oh, sorry, Jim. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jim.
First of all, um, the contract that I'm looking at, it does have a timeframe of until August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And there is just a one non-compliance, the contractor understands that non-compliance with required activities, reporting procedures, and reporting deadlines set forth above will constitute a breach of this contract, so. But the second comment I wanted to ask is, there's a lot of discussions, and I don't want to go too much more in this meeting, but there's a lot of discussions going on of what was the actual reason that the subject of the church property has come up. Um, there are different theories that I'm hearing left and right, um, of, um, why, why this is happening at this point. So I'd like, I'd like to see the board just kind of give an overview of why they're doing this with the church members and asking them all these questions and stuff like that. And then hopefully maybe come back with a definitive reasoning of why they're being asked all these questions, and why it has gone to the lawyer, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you. Have a good night.
We can answer the church question. Um, without a lot of trouble. Where the town, the town is paying, Ellen, what are we paying for expenses on the church on that property?
Hey, I don't know how much they are, but we pay for the insurance on the building, we pay for repairs on the roof falls part, we pay, pay to take down the steeple, we pay.
Snow removal.
Snow removal, we have to, we have mall, all the maintenance, because it's on that land, but to the town hall.
I think.
So that's, but I'm just saying, so, so the discussion with them, I mean, we're, we're footing the bill.
Well, hang on, I.
Right.
We are kidding something. Do we know if the church is paying?
No.
We don't, we, we don't know. It's not that they're not.
Church does not pay anything except for heating, electricity, and.
They don't have their own insurance?
No.
I think we need to, I think before we make declarative statements, we need to bring the members here.
This is something that's been going on for years. Years and years and years. It's nothing new.
I, I will, I will make a statement about why I brought the church up, and, and, and I'm not afraid to make this statement. I've lived here, it'd be sixty years in June. I don't know who owns the church or the property that it sits on. And, um, I, I for one, sitting on the board, would like to know what portion of the church we do or don't, or whatever own, and, and I, I think it's just a, a point that should be clarified for everybody in town.
I agree.
Of, of whether or not the town owns the church. And I'm not looking to get out from underneath, um, paying the insurance on the church. I'm not looking to get out from underneath paying the lawn mowing. I'm not looking to get out from, from underneath any of it as a, as the, a select board member. I just want to know who owns the property? Do the taxpayers of the town and panel own it? Do the taxpayers of the town and panel own it with the church? Um.
At this point, we're speculating and let's just wait for Bob to come back.
A hundred percent, Bob, that's what it is. It's pure speculation. I stated this. And I apologize to Donna, you know, I wasn't trying to cause a problem, I just wanted to answer your question. And, and Jim asked it, and, and, and I just, I just wanted to know who owns it. And from, from a standpoint, we're spending tax dollars on a building. And, like I said.
Well, hang on, now we're, now we're getting into discussion. Let's get the ownership, because if they're paying stuff too, we don't know what they're paying.
Exactly.
If they're paying also, I, I mean, I can see a situation, just hear me out. I can see a situation, if that was joint, then both parties would, would carry insurance in order to protect their assets. So that's just one hypothetical, but these are the things that, that we need to hear, rather than speculate and claim that we own the property because we're paying some bills.
No, I, no, I.
Nobody ever said that. Who said that?
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
That's the impression we're giving. So I, I just, let's, let's table it until we get the, the definitive answer.
I was just answering Jim's question. He asked a question, I was trying to answer his question about why it got brought up, and that's, that's the, the only reason that it got brought up is no one can tell us who owns the church.
Right. We need a clear.
Right.
Fine. I think we're all in agreement.
I don't know how many times we have to keep saying, the lawyer's going to hopefully sort that out and get back to us.
Right.
Stop.
Right.
Like, enough.
Right, so I think, is that answering your question, Jim?
Yep.
Well, yes, yeah, I was just confused between the lawyer researching the church and the lawyer researching the, uh, Old Town Office. So if that is one combined situation, then that's fine with me.
It is one combined. It is, because they're all on the same piece of property.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was no alternative motive out there or anything like that. Thank you.
If there's no more public comment, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive for personnel for the executive assistant and the administrative assistant.
So moved.
So hang on, uh, was, I understood from the previous discussion that I was the topic, not the executive assistant and the.
We never said you were the topic. I don't know where you even got that from.
Was this, did this have to do with my communication, I asked, and the answer was yes.
No, it wasn't. Who said that?
Who said that?
Who said that?
I didn't hear anybody say yes.
Nobody said yes. We said it was about the executive and the assistant.
And I've explicitly said that because it was an executive session, I was not going to answer that question. I explicitly said that.
Okay, then I will participate in the executive session, but.
That's your choice.
But with the way you said it to me, you were looking at me going, I'm not going to tell you. So.
Come on, Bob, really? Second the motion.
So let's go, let's go ahead and let's go into executive assist, uh, go into executive session.
And there may be action when we come out. Just so we're clear.
Motion table.
I have a motion on the table. I get a second, like Jamie?
Yep.
Uh, any more discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, if there's no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. There's nothing, there's no public comment after that, right?
No.
So moved.
Second. All of them favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.